Good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone for being here, both in person, online via Zoom. And I know there's some people who are going to be watching this when it's recorded and posted to the website afterwards. Thank you all for coming to this special meeting tonight. We expect to have more events coming up, but also encourage people to send in questions through our administrator, Jerry. Far right, your left, Jerry Jimes. He's our new-ish administrator. And you obviously are welcome to ask questions at meetings like this and events or any other time that you'd like. I'll myself be sitting on Broad Street at nine o'clock with coffee in front of the pharmacy on Saturday morning. I'm happy to try to answer any questions we have to. Tonight, we will hear from, as requested, New Jersey American Water, who is the proposed purchaser of the water system. They'll be available for questions and along with the Water Committee, here to my left and right, our attorney, and our financial advisor from Physics Advisors, who have been representing the borough for quite some time. In anticipation of the November 4th referendum, we're going to continue to provide opportunities for people to ask questions, get information about the borough's, the borough governing body's decision to advance the potential sale forward. I want again apologize for this meeting getting postponed to tonight from July. You know, we used the best information we had then, and while I would do it again, it was all completely wrong. It was a lovely evening weather-wise, and again, sorry. I'm also sorry for those watching on video tonight. If you had a conflicting event, I too have a conflicting event, but I'm here tonight missing a senior back-to-school night, but this will be taped. That one won't, unfortunately. I want to, you'll notice also that here, that's a packed room, that we have the members of our Water Committee and our professionals here. We had planned this meeting as a meeting just of the subcommittee and did not set up as a full council meeting because we're not planning to take any votes or do any business. Out of an abundance of caution, the rest of council are home saving some seats here as well. But just want to make sure that we're fully complying with not making it seem like we're going to be making a decision or voting on something here tonight. There's just two members of council and myself and not a quorum. But I wanted everyone to know that they're not here because they didn't want to be here. They care about this very much and will be likely watching at home as well. I want to thank them all for their patience, as that was a new development, frankly, today that we had planned for them to join and watch as well. Tonight's meeting will first have a short presentation and interruption from the proposed purchaser, New Jersey American Water, who was selected among the three bidders as being the best fit for the borough to advance, followed by a presentation of predominantly our infrastructure costs and borough finances and the impact of the sale potentially on those. And then we'll open up the floor to questions. I expect there will be a lot of questions. So we will try to get to everyone. If we get past, say, 10 o'clock, we'll talk about some follow-up events. But we do want to hear from everybody tonight and get as many things answered as we possibly can. Got some seats up front as well. So for the questions, I do expect some people have some things they'll want to say as part of their questions and might make for a good back-and-forth for answers. We're going to use our traditional three-minute rule, but that's not going to be for answers. So I'll leave it up to the questioners. If you'd like to ask a question that's, you know, three minutes, you're free to do that. If you have a shorter question, we'll try to direct it to someone to answer, let you use more time to ask follow-ups. The goal is to get to as many people tonight as we possibly can for questions and answers. Let everyone have their opportunity, but also get to as many people as we possibly can. So we'll start with in-person, we'll get to questions, then go to Zoom. I did warn some of the people who are sitting up front. We will start to have the questions on this "my-left-your-right" front section. And when it comes time, I'll ask that we start a queue kind of along the wall here for those who would like to speak. The people here may not have every answer just at the ready, but we'll try. If we need a follow-up, I'm happy to connect back. And if it's something that requires a follow-up, don't feel that you need to say your email address or phone number. Our administrator here could get that. If there's something that's complicated or needs some research, we'd be happy to get back to you. But you don't need to publicly say who you are, excuse me, where to get to for us to do that. We'll figure that out offline as well. Let me just say, we would not all be here tonight if we didn't all love this town and care for this community. Each one of us, that's our base starting point for what we're doing here. And as neighbors, our hearts and minds are interested in what's best for this community. Of course, I know it'll be obvious, we cannot all agree on everything about what the best thing to do, but that's exactly what our process in this community is all about. I want to thank our speakers tonight, the Water Committee and the Borough's Professionals, for the work that went into putting this information together and getting the word out about this meeting. Clearly, we did get the word out about it. I'm happy to see so many people here tonight and more than 30-plus people online via Zoom. I also want to thank those of you who are curious, who have questions, who are skeptical, frankly, who want to push back about what you hear. We all do our best when we can come together and discuss these things from all sides so that everyone in November can decide what they feel is the best direction for this borough. I do ask and expect that everyone remain respectful for the speakers and those asking questions and that we do not interrupt or talk over those who are speaking or the questions that are being asked and that the questions be limited to those who are recognized up at the front to speak when it's that time. Because we are broadcasting on Zoom, it is important that we only try to have one person speak at a time. The microphone and camera that's catching everything is up here. And again, there's people watching on Zoom and we're going to have this reported for those who cannot attend here tonight. If you're here in person and cannot hear what's being said, I'm going to ask that you raise your hand. I'll kind of identify you to make sure that we get the message that the speaker needs to be louder. While it may look like there's some speakers, they don't actually do things for this type of meeting. So we'll do our best to enunciate and be loud so that everyone can see. But again, if there's a problem hearing, raise your hand, get my attention. I'll make sure that we stop and get the volume up from whoever's speaking. The information that got us to this evening has been in the works for years. Frankly, it's involved creating and revising capital plans, exploring grants, vetting potential purchasers. It's involved approvals from DEP and DCA, and there are more to come, no matter how we as a community choose to proceed. But looking back at the nearly two-year process, we've come pretty close to the timeline that we initially expected for our community to be in a position to make a decision. The proposed contract with New Jersey American has been approved by the state, and our plan to use the proceeds to pay off our debt has been approved by the Department of Community Affairs. The next step really is for everyone in November to vote yes or no about whether we should proceed. As a reminder, Tuesday, November 4th is election day. This will be up with just the regular elections this year. Early in-person voting starts this year, Saturday, the 25th through Sunday, the 2nd. The closest location for that is going to be the Pennington Firehouse, or you could vote by mail. If you're not registered, vote. Plans due, October 14th is the last day to register. And I ask, if you're not sure, again, voted a while, make sure you can check to make sure you're voted in if you're not re-registered. So having said that, our first part of tonight is going to be a short piece from the proposed purchaser, New Jersey American. I'm going to invite Lee to introduce herself and anyone from her team that is going to be here to perhaps answer questions and put something up on the screen that they've prepared. Then we're going to get into the Water Committee and predominantly our financial advisor, reintroduce them to you guys, and then we'll have time for questions. So Lee, if you could, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I encourage anyone to come grab the seat. There's an empty one here, so if anyone likes a seat, there's an empty one in the front.
There's one here, too.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much. My name is Lee Muller. I'm the Director of Business Development with New Jersey American Water. So great to see so many faces. How is my volume in the back? Great. Well, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce the team that I've brought with me here this evening. We are excited to have a dialogue with the community, so we brought the team here to really answer questions that you have. So I have Kim Shalik Down. She's the Vice President of Business Development, External Affairs, and Government Affairs. Carmen Tierno, he's the Senior Director of Operations for our Central Region. Jamie Hahn, Director of Rates and Regulatory. Michael Keever, Senior Director of Rates and Regulatory. Jenny Ley Borcel, Manager of Business Development, and Sakima James, Manager of Government Affairs. So we brought a robust team with us here this evening in the hopes that we can answer as many questions as you may have. But as the mayor said, if there's anything that we can't answer tonight, we are very happy to take your information and get in touch with you and move, you know, continue the dialogue as you guys move to make an important decision this upcoming election. Next slide, please. New Jersey American Water is the largest water and wastewater service provider in the state of New Jersey. We serve every one in three New Jerseians. We are a part of 190 communities spread throughout the state. We're very proud to note that for the second year in a row, we ranked the highest in customer satisfaction from the JD Tower 2025 U.S. Water Utility Residential Customer Satisfaction Study. Very wordy, but we're very proud of this. And we also ranked number one in trust. Now, we recognize that water is the only utility that you ingest, so it really means a lot to us that our customers are not only satisfied with the product that we provide, but that they also trust us. We are, that's all right. We are locally based with Central Region's Operations Center in Hillsborough, and we provide water service to many communities throughout the area. We are experts in water and wastewater service. It is all that our team does day in and day out, and we take great pride in providing that service to our customers. We have approximately 865 employees spread throughout the state, 540 of which are represented by labor unions. And we take the partnership that we enter into communities like Hopewell Borough very seriously. We really like to be not only a utility provider, but really become a fabric of the community. We recognize that water is, you know, a precious resource to everyone, and so we really become a good community partner. We do that through grants, through charitable giving, through volunteering, and through workforce development. As the mayor mentioned, the procurement process in which we participated, we made a financial commitment to the Borough of Hopewell for a total of $13.4 million. There are two components to that. There is a $6.4 million purchase price, which essentially would be sale proceeds that would go directly to the municipality. And then there is a $7 million commitment in infrastructure investment in the borough, which we would execute within the first five years of ownership. Should the referendum pass on day one of ownership, we would do a robust analysis of the system. We'd want to understand what is happening with your water system from both an engineering standpoint as well as a technical standpoint. That would allow us to appropriately prioritize capital projects needed throughout the system. But we do know, on day one, we will begin identifying and replacing lead and galvanized steel service lines throughout the borough. This is very important, one, for a water safety standpoint, and two, to meet DEP requirements to remove all lead from the state of New Jersey by 2031. So we will start that on day one, and that program is executed at no direct cost to customers. We replace both the utility-owned portion of the service line as well as the customer-owned portion. Knowing that there's a lot of very beautiful older homes in this community, there's a high likelihood that there is lead present throughout the system. We also know that the system does have a history of water main breaks in the area, so we would immediately begin a robust water main replacement program using the knowledge of the borough, of the water utility, to understand where are the hotspots of the breaks you're experiencing today. Use that to help us prioritize where we make our capital commitments. And then we do understand that there is an aging water storage facility up on the hill. Our team would again take a look at that to understand what is appropriate there. Are we talking rehab? Are we talking full replacement? But again, we do that analysis to make sure that we are making appropriate investments in the infrastructure. Next slide, please. Hopewell Borough was able to pursue sale of the water system through the Water Infrastructure Protection Act because the DEP did determine that there is a presence of an emergent condition. The emergent, one of the emergent conditions that was identified is the presence of PFOS in your one remaining well. So New Jersey American Water's proposal to address that emergent condition is that, again, if the referendum is successful, upon day one of ownership, we would take well number four offline. We have an existing interconnect through which we are actually already providing water to the community. That puts us in a unique position. We would be able to, on day one, open up fully our interconnect, meet all water supply needs, meet all fire suppression needs through the existing interconnect. That allows us to make sure that you, as residents, are receiving water that is compliant with all New Jersey state regulations around forever chemicals. And it also allows the borough to maintain the historical and cultural significance of the wellhouses that you have here in town. So we talked about the financial commitment in terms of the purchase price. We've talked about capital commitment. Really, the third piece is rates. You know, what would we be charging customers? So New Jersey American Water has proposed that we would bring Hopewell Borough residents to what we call our A1 rate schedule. That is the rates that we charge the communities in the area that we already serve. What that means for an average household in Hopewell Borough that is using approximately 4,000 gallons of water a month, that household would see on day one a decrease of their water bill by 36%. I want to note that that 36% does include our base rate as well as our BPU-approved surcharges. So that's what we call an all-in bill. So from your Hopewell Borough bill today to the bill that you would see from New Jersey American Water on day one, you would see a 36% decrease for that average household of 4,000 gallon usage per month. If you are a larger user, if you have a larger family, if you have a business, if you have a laundromat that uses a significant amount of water, you are likely to see decreases of between 40 to 50% on your bill. That is because Hopewell Borough has employed a tiered rate structure, and we do not have that structure. Therefore, it results in a decrease, significant decrease, in your water bill. New Jersey American Water is regulated by the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities. What does that mean? The BPU is a state government entity that sets our rates. We do not set our rates. The BPU determines what we can recover from our customers through rates through a very robust extensive process called a rate case. So again, they are the determining government body that sets our rates. All of our rates and surcharges are subject to BPU review, and we have to go through an extensive filing process, which Mike and Jamie can speak to during the question and answer period. And it is also a transparent process with the public. So we talked a little bit about how we can offer a reduction in rates, short-term rate stability, but we can also offer long-term rate stability to Hopewell Borough residents. And we are able to do that by, through our ability to spread costs over our entire customer base. We serve probably closer to 750,000 customers, and we are able to spread Hopewell Borough's needed capital investments over that entire customer base. If Hopewell Borough, if you make the choice in November to maintain ownership of the system and undertake the needed capital investments, they would be carried by the 800 or so households in this town alone. So just the ability to spread those costs over customers helps keep rates stable. What it also does is that it doesn't react to events that take place in the borough. Let's say you have a significant main break that you need to go out and repair. That doesn't create a spike in your rates with New Jersey American Water. Let's say the New Jersey DEP decides that there's another forever chemical that they decide needs to be regulated, and you have to put in treatment on your well. That cost does not spike your rates with New Jersey American Water. You can expect a very stable course of rates through the BPU regulation process. We are very sensitive that there is what some may call an affordability crisis in New Jersey around gas and electric rates. We have done robust analysis to understand what does our water bill mean for the average New Jersey household. We have done a study that shows that our water bills consistently have remained below 1% of the average monthly income. The overall industry standard, they say, is that your water bill should remain below 2% of the average monthly income. Again, we've shown that we can consistently keep our bills below 1%, and that is a metric we look at consistently to make sure that we are keeping our service affordable for our customers while we make the capital investments needed to keep water service flowing for our customers. Now, we do recognize that there are households that need help with bills, and we are able to help them through our H2L Help to Others program. We're very proud of the fact that we can offer this to our customers. There are two components to the program. There is a grant component, and then there's a universal affordability discount portion. Those are both determined by income level. This program is administered by a third party called Shares. If a customer is interested in the program, they actually apply through Shares. They determine their eligibility, and then we are provided with basically a list of customers that should receive the discount and any applicable discount that they should receive. So again, administered by, you know, a non-biased third party, and we're, again, very proud of being able to provide this bill-paying assistance program to our customers. So one of the more or less tangible benefits of selling a water system is really, all surrounds risk, right? There is risk with owning a water system, whether it comes to, you know, increasing regulations on water quality or just the infrastructure under the roads. So New Jersey American Water is very focused on making sure that we make responsible proactive investments in our infrastructure so that you don't see significant disruptions in your service. The photo on the right is a photo of a Raritan Millstone water treatment plant. It is a source of supply for the water that you do receive already through the interconnect right out here on Main Street. This photo is taken from Hurricane Ida that moved through the area in 2021. I'm sure many of you remember significant rainfall with that event. This is what the confluence of the Raritan Millstone River is around where this plant sits. The brown water is floodwater. Basically, island in the middle is our water treatment plant. We were able to maintain service for our customers throughout this event, and the only way we were able to do that is because we had proactively invested in a flood wall around this plant. A few decades prior, or maybe a decade or so prior, we had experienced flooding in this area, and we said, we need to raise this flood wall. We are very, very happy that we did. It came very close to the top of this flood wall during that event. But again, we were able to maintain service for our customers, and that really happens with that intentional proactive investment in your infrastructure. Next slide, please. We also take our roles as environmental stewards very seriously. We recognize that we are delivering a very precious natural resource. So it is first and foremost in our minds to making sure that we are protecting the water supply. We work very closely with the DEP and other water supply authorities to make sure that we are looking at the health of the water supply, that we are maintaining all appropriate withdrawals within our allocations. And we have source water protection teams, right? We have water quality and environmental teams that are really all about maintaining our water supply. We also have defined sustainability goals under our parent company, American Water, and we do look at ways of using alternative sources of energy. Unfortunately, it takes a lot of energy to move water, and it is expensive. So we are always looking for ways of how to basically get other sources of energy. So we have deployed solar at a handful of our plants. The plant on the right, or upper right, is Canal Road, that again is another treatment plant that is a source of supply for the interconnect here. You'll see, you can actually see Raritan Millstone in the far-left corner of that photo. But that solar array can power up to 40% of the power needs of that water treatment plant. Down on the bottom is our Canover Quasimare floating solar array. That's actually located in Billburn, New Jersey, so a little further north. But that solar array actually powers close to 95% of the power needs for that plant. So again, just another way that we can reduce operational costs, which is a direct savings for our customers.
Yes, I move to the next slide. Would you mind? I think if you stood closer to the TV, the Zoom folks would see you.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
It's hard to remember. So in the beginning, I talked about our commitment to communities, and that one of the ways that we do that is through charitable giving. We are able to administer charitable giving through what's called the American Water Charitable Foundation. And the foundation is focused on three pillars of giving, so water, people, and communities. We're very proud that in this April, we awarded grants to nine organizations doing great work for the environment, great work for the watershed, totally over $200,000. So again, we recognize that there are organizations already doing amazing work, and we think it's great to be able to support them through dollars. Next slide, please. And the last piece I want to touch on is our workforce development program. As I mentioned earlier, we are experts in water and wastewater service, but that does not come easy, right? We are constantly looking at ways to continue training for our workforce, to help professional development for our workforce, and also to make sure that there's a healthy pipeline of people coming up through the industry. Unfortunately, a lot of our employees are nearing retirement-eligible age, so we are very focused on making sure that we have a healthy pipeline of professionals interested in entering the water industry. One of the ways that we do this is through our Water Up program. This is a program that really focuses on maybe underserved communities, young professionals that are seeking paths in life that can give them, you know, good-paying, healthy careers. We bring them in and basically give them the nuts and bolts training of how to be in a utility and really encourage them to consider a career in the water industry. Now, we've had several cohorts across the state, and we're very excited that later this month we'll be launching our latest group in partnership with the Essex County Community College. Next slide. So that'll just say thank you. Again, we have our team here for questions at the end, and very excited to, you know, open a dialogue with the community as we make this considered an important decision this upcoming November.
Right. Lee, thank you so much. Especially first thing, one, thank you, everyone, for helping us make this to be a successful meeting. Two, Lee, thank you for keeping that brief. I appreciate you honoring that request very much. Next, before we get to questions, we have some slides from the Water Committee, so give me one second. I will put those up. Okay, let me just go back and share our screen here.
Nice start while you're doing this.
You may, and yes, please go.
Hi, Sherri Hook, part of the Water Committee and council member. We've got a big emotional decision to make here, and unfortunately, we can't keep things the way they are. So we have a choice. We can keep ownership of our system, figure out how to pay for the maintenance, the upgrade of all that's involved in that. We can sell the system to New Jersey American Water and figure out what that looks like. There's pros and cons and unknowns in each of these decisions, and either one is going to have a big impact on our community. So because you here are the ones that'll be making that choice, it is critical to understand the real benefits and the real costs of each of those choices. So thank you for being here and for taking the time to get educated on what those choices might mean. I want to take just a second before we get to the presentation, just to address council's role in this process. So we were elected to look out for the best interest of Hopewell Borough, and that means a bunch of things. Make sure that our infrastructure is sound, ensure that living here and doing business here remains affordable, that we're responsible with your tax dollars. And that also means that we really have to dig into the complexities of decisions like this. Do the analysis, look at all the viable existing options that we have before us, and decide what is best for the future of the borough. Like many of you, we may have been resistant at the beginning to the thought of losing local control of our water system. But as we looked at the data and the story that it told us, it became very clear which decision was the most sustainable. That's why council unanimously approved the contract that is now up for public vote. However, we want you to come up with your own conclusions. That's why we're having this meeting here tonight. So what we're going to show you is the actual impact of each decision on you and on the town. You're going to see analysis and a lot of numbers and some projections, and you can judge for yourself. So Brian and David are going to take you through this. They're really good at turning numbers into meaning, and I'll provide some color commentary. But as the mayor said, please keep track of your questions. It's really important to us that we answer all of them so that you all have everything you need to make the decision in November that's best for you and your family and for the town.
Thank you, Sherri. Just to back up a little bit about how we got to this point, we had a prior meeting a few months ago, talking about historic rate trends, comparison of the rates, how BPU oversight works. It is up on our website. If you've got a postcard with a QR code to the borough website slash water, you can click and watch that again there. Tonight's focus is the impact on the purchase price and the costs that our advisors have worked with us on in creating a capital plan for our system and how that capital plan would potentially impact rates going forward. They'll allow you to make a comparison about what that, what that looks like. Where we are in the course of events here is that the Board of Public Utilities approved the form of contract that we negotiated with New Jersey American Water in mid-June. That is the contract or the terms that the Borough Government That is the contractor, the terms that the borough governing body chose amongst free bidders that we received as being the most advantageous in rates and service and, and other factors for the borough. We were very pleased with the competition that we received through that process. And ultimately, the potential suitor that council has brought for you today, New Jersey American Water, was the, the one chosen to advance. The next piece of it was the borough's defeasance plan. Defeasance means getting rid of debt. So ultimately, there are two big components to the potential sale. One is, and we'll talk about this tonight, what do our rates look like? How much will you pay and a business pay for water either now or best we can predict into the future? And second, what do we do with the six point four million dollars that we get as a purchase price? What Borough Council has chosen and what is mostly required under the Water Infrastructure Protection Act is to pay off our debt. And we're going to talk a lot tonight about what that means for us to be able to pay off our debt and, and what the financial impact to the town. Next, in July, we sent the results of this to the county clerk so that the question or yes or no about whether this happens will appear again on the November fourth ballot. And just if, if there's any takeaway from tonight, please, it's make sure that you vote, that everyone's registered to vote and prepared to vote in this election. You should vote in every election regardless, but this one in, in particular. Couple of highlights of the contract again. It does involve the immediate, as, as Lee said, remediation of the PFAS by connecting us fully to their system, which is free of PFAS, so remediated. An immediate transition to their regulated rates for the ones that we charged here in the borough. Seven million dollars in infrastructure expenditures at least within the first five years. A replacement of all lead service lines by the requirement in twenty thirty-one. And that six point four million dollar payment to the borough. And just to, we'll talk about this a little bit more. To put that in perspective, our entire budget, you know, for everything for the town is about four and a half million dollars. And the entire amount that we tax everyone for everything we do, from roads to police services, is two point five million dollars. And so the, the purchase price is a multiple of, of that. And we'll talk about what that means for our finances and, and opportunities as a town. And again, we have been blessed with some beautiful historic protected items in town, including our wellhouses. And part of the deal that was reached involves, in most cases, those being returned to the borough for ownership. But if they are kept and used by New Jersey American, they will be subject to a conservation easement and a sort of protection so that they will stay maintained and looking in the ways that our community expects going forward. Maybe this would be a good time to reintroduce, obviously, Sherry, introduce herself. David, if you and Brian want to reintroduce yourselves and, and kind of take it from there.
David Mackie, serving as Borough Council, been on council for twenty-seven years. I'm a consulting geologist.
Hi, I'm Brian Morris with Phoenix Advisors. I've been working with the borough for a number of years on all things finance, debt issuance, budget assistance, you name it.
Thank you, guys. Good show.
Yep, hello.
It's your responsibility.
All right, well, first of all, thank you all so much for coming. I'm, I'm so delighted to see a full house here. This is without a doubt one of the most consequential decisions we will ever make in our lifetimes in the borough. Whatever your opinion is, whichever way you want to go, it's going to have a major effect on this town. And I'm really delighted to see you all here. And I encourage you all to just dig as deep as you want to in all of this to satisfy yourself that you understand the facts and that you have the information that you need to make an informed decision. But that's what this is really about. So again, we'll talk a little bit about what's actually for sale, just to make sure that it's clear to everyone. So it's the physical aspects, assets, I'm sorry, of the system. By the way, can everyone hear me? So wells, water distribution system, that's mains piping, all the physical sort of hardware, the storage tank, which we sometimes call the reservoir, which is upon a hill in Hopeful Township, about two hundred feet above the town, about two hundred thirty thousand gallons. The sale does not include our sewer collection system, but absolutely has nothing to do with it. And this is just a map that shows our service area. So this is Hopeful Borough. You can see we also have customers in the township. This is actually where our reservoir is up here. And all together, we serve about two thousand people, a little over. So in terms of what's being sold and what's not being sold, I just wanted to make sure that, that we're very clear about the fact that we're not selling water resources. And this is not something that, you know, this concept doesn't necessarily fall into most people's daily lives. But there's this idea of the public trust doctrine, and that is that there are certain natural resources that are held in trust by the government, in this case, the state of New Jersey, for the use and for the benefit of the public. So they can't really be bought and sold. And in New Jersey, water resources, groundwater resources and other resources all fall into this category of waters of the state. And that includes wetlands, streams, ocean. And, and it's actually defined in several different statutes, including the Water Quality Planning Act, which is what applies to our water systems. So this is the definition of waters of the state. Just if anybody cares, you can see it's pretty much all encompassing. It's just about every drop. And, and I, I put the citation out there just in case anybody ever wants to know. So what does this mean? Okay, what this means is that we do not own nor can we sell water resources. We are selling the physical system that extracts water from our wells, that distributes it, delivers it, meters it, treats it, all of those things, the physical assets, but not the water resource. And just to, so people understand how the resource is managed by the state. The state regulates groundwater withdrawals through something called a water allocation permit. And we have two wells in town, one that's been out of service since two thousand and one that's active. But in both cases, when you install a well, you have to actually put in observation wells and go through a whole complicated hydrogeological testing process to find out what the sustainable yield of that well is without having damage to other natural resources. So for example, if you had a well and you were pumping too much from it, you could lower the water table so much that a stream goes dry, or you could cause your neighbor's wells to go dry. So there's a whole complicated system that's done to make sure that you can pump a certain number of gallons per minute or gallons per day out of a well without having any negative effects. And that's how the water allocation permit is determined, the limits on what you can pump. And it's specific to the well and it's specific to the geology. If you want to change that limit, you have to do more testing, right? But basically, and so in our case, if we sell this system, the contract says that we would request that our water allocation permit be transferred to New Jersey American Water. We're not selling the resource, and the state actually, they're the ones that administer the permit, so it's up to them. But anyone else who would operate our system would be subject to the same limitations that we have been under these years. None of that would change. Next slide please. So I wanted to go over a little bit about the proposed PFAS treatment or treatment projects, as well as number four and six. And some of you, most of you know, because you get the letters every three months. You know, we had this one PFAS detection in April of twenty twenty-two. These are the numbers since then. You know, we're, we're below the state maximum containment level. However, there is a federal rule that was passed last year, and there's a federal maximum containment level, which is quite a bit lower than the state one. And that goes into effect in April of twenty twenty-nine. And actually, I think the administration was talking about delaying another couple of years, but anyway. And, and so under that much lower standard, not only would we be exceeding this, but most of the supply goals in this area. So it's fascinating that impact. But anyway, we were very fortunate to be able to apply for a federally funded grant. And this is a program called the ECSBC. It's the Environment Emerging Contaminants, which is what PFAS is. A small and disadvantaged systems grant. It's limited to small systems, less than ten thousand people. And ones that have specific issues having to do with emerging contaminants, which PFAS is one. So we were successful in to create a two point three four million dollar federal grant award. And that award would cover installation of a PFAS treatment system in well number four, which is where we have that problem. And this is a sort of a three D rendering of what that system might look like. It hasn't really been fully designed. But additionally, it would pay for a PFAS treatment system and arsenic treatment system in well number six, which is located in Hopeful Borough Park. And that well has been offline since two thousand, which is a naturally occurring arson. And we have looked at many different ways of treating that, and we've done pilot studies and so on, but we've never been able to come up with the cash to fund treating it. And, and it's one of the reasons actually that we've been buying some of our water from New Jersey America. That and the fact we had two other wells that had issues. But so if we make this decision, if we don't sell the system, we would execute this grant and install these treatment systems, restore well number six to service, and have the capacity to produce all of our water locally. Right now, we rely on New Jersey America through the interconnection for between forty and sixty percent of our water, depending on the conditions. It's about, it's about a two-year timeframe for planning, permitting, and design for that, if you can imagine. It's, it's just before you can actually get to the point of, oh, sorry, planning and construction. So this is well number six. So one of the aspects of this is well number six, this, this well has a lovely little wellhouse, but it's never really built to hold much more than a little chlorine injector, which is all united in two thousand, in nineteen ninety-five when the well was built. And so what would have to happen is we'd actually have to build another, rather than add on to this building, the plan would be to build a second treatment building. And that would house the arsenic and the PFAS treatment systems. And that would be covered by the grant. What the grant doesn't cover, of course, is the operational cost going forward. So one of the things I wanted people to understand is that, yes, if we put well number six online, we're no longer buying water from New Jersey America except during emergencies. But we do have additional costs related to the operation of the second well and also the operation and maintenance of these new treatment systems. So you have PFAS systems at both wells now that we didn't have before. You have an arsenic treatment system we didn't have before. You have additional laboratory analysis. There's a whole long list of laboratory parameters that we have to analyze for every quarter, for example, at each well. And you have additional energy costs because you're running a pump, pumping all this water out on now two wells instead of one. So this is a rough estimate of what those costs might be during a year. I have a little double asterisk here for the arsenic one. We really don't have a good fix on that. This was based on an engineer's estimate from two years ago that we just sort of put into current twenty twenty-five dollars. The laboratory analytical fees we know because we know what it costs basically to do the analytical for well number four. The energy cost we know because we know what it costs to run number four and we know what our bills are. And, and the maintenance cost, yeah, yeah, comes from an engineer's estimate. So roughly, we're looking at about a hundred and five hundred, six thousand dollars a year. I actually had a conversation with somebody recently about the arsenic treatment system maintenance because I was, this is sort of a placeholder. And, and I talked to a water supply expert that I know, and I said, do you have a rough idea of what you think this would be in practice? He said, well, let me make a few calls, and he called me back, and he said, he said, you're not going to like it. I said, what? He said, well, it's probably more like forty or fifty thousand a year to run the arsenic treatment system. And I won't bore you with all the details, but it has to do with any other type of treatment system that you have. There's sometimes a need to manage backwash from the filter systems. And the problem is that we can't set an arsenic contaminated backwash to the Storybrooke Sewage Authority because that would create a lot of issue, regulatory issues for them in terms of their permitting. It's something we knew from years ago. So what that means is you have to collect that material or de-water it, dispose of it, adds a lot to your maintenance cost. There are other ways of getting around it, but in any case, I'm just letting you know that this is a conservative estimate. But we can compare that to what our purchased water budget is for twenty twenty-five, which is two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So arguably, you know, you, you're looking at a reduction in your overall by, you know, somewhere in the range of, let's say, a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Next slide please. Another aspect of putting well number six online. All of you know that we have pretty hard water in the borough. And unfortunately, well number six actually is harder than well number four. Because that well was originally installed in nineteen ninety-five. The purpose of the well was really as a backup supply during periods of drought. We quickly discovered that the water was really hard, and the folks that lived closest to that well were right on the vein. You know, their dishwashers were freezing up pretty fast. So, you know, obviously, under scenario, we're producing a lot of water for these two wells, who would try to get as much as we can out of well number four. Six is as little as possible, but, but we're going to be using it. And in comparison, it's something you should know about, is that the typical hardness of the water from the New Jersey American interconnection is substantially lower, you know, about half. And, and actually is why, if you're closer to well number four right now, you're probably getting hard water, depending on where you guard the system, and if you're close to the intersection, you're probably getting softer water. But in any case, and, and this is, it's not a health issue, but it's a cost issue and it's an aesthetic issue. And if you're like me, and you buy a new kitchen faucet, and I buy like six sets of seals because I know I'm going to rebuild it every year. So, or you could get a water softener, but either way, there are costs associated with it. So I just want to make sure that that's, people understand that. Okay, so now we're going to get into more than nitty gritty and I ask for your patience. Because there's a lot of graphs, there's a lot of stuff, we did a lot of, but I wanted to give you a little background. So the basic principle here, we're looking at a very important consequential decision for the community. We want to develop as much information as we can about what it would look like under either of these two scenarios. And that means a lot of digging, a lot of analysis, some forecasting, some modeling, some of the more precise than others, but all of it developing tools to put together as much information as we can so that we can look at this and decide what we think is the right thing for the community, but ultimately for the community to make that decision. So what we're going to present tonight on this is the culmination of about two years of fiscal and engineering analysis. I remember starting off in a meeting in May of twenty twenty-three and kind of convening the water team and our engineers and saying, all right, folks, if we're going to hang on to this system, I need a list of every major capital project that we're looking at. We need to put costs on it. We need to have a clear-eyed view in the future. What do we have to do if we're going to stick it out? And, and that was a process because we, and I'll explain how we went through that process. But before I go into that, I just want to let you know sort of the things that we actually have been doing. And, and that is just, just capital, you know, replacement of lines and so on over the last, you know, twenty-five years. So, you know, we have in the course mostly of our street repaving projects, replaced mains, we've replaced hydrants, we've replaced, we've gotten rid of lead service connections, boost nicks. Typically on the streets that we own, if we're doing a major project, a repaving project, not just milling and mating, but where we actually have stolen water occurs. First thing we do is look at the main and say, okay, is this main going to be good for another twenty years or do we need to replace it? Because twenty years is about the length of time typically of a painting project. So where, you know, where that's happened, and we thought we needed to replace the mains, we've done it. And similarly, you know, hybrids and other things. We've also replaced some things just because they've frozen up. If you know how hard water is in your house, when you want to shove something to a toilet, fix a flood valve, and it doesn't, well, imagine if you've got an eight-inch main with a hundred and twenty-five times per square inch. So anyway, that's briefly on that. So how do we do this? We launched this process called an asset management plan or a process of developing an asset management plan. It's actually required by the state of New Jersey for systems that have more than five hundred connections. Smaller ones don't have to do it. And it is a comprehensive inventory and mapping of every physical asset in the system. And I mean down to the last valve, fire hydrant, main, all of it. And it requires a lot of work. We actually had, we have a wonderful engineer, Mark Sked, with Bob Legner, who's put together a whole GIS system. Our water operator, Dave Wise, that can now look at a tablet and call up information on a fire hydrant. You know, when it is made, when the parts are available, what the estimated lifetime is, all this information is in there. It was a very expensive thing to do. It was a very time-consuming thing to do. But the value of this is it allows you to look at your entire system and all the assets that you have. One of the things that are most consequential, if they fail, what's the One of the things that are most consequential, if they fail, what's the consequence of failure? What is the probability of failure? And based on that, you prioritize your capital needs. And and over the next three years or five years or ten years, figure out what it is that you have to do. And then, of course, you have to add price tags on that stuff and that's where everybody gets sticker shock. I will say that, you know, this process began in twenty twenty three or twenty twenty two really, but we didn't really have price tags on it until twenty twenty four. It's something we did because we were required to do it. In retrospect, I wish we'd done it twenty years ago because it allows you to plan and look to the future in a way that you can't when you're just dealing with every day. Well, we've got a main break over here or we gotta fix this hydrant because it's jammed, right? But, you know, in a small town with limited resources, this is what we've been doing. So this gives us a complete picture of what we need to do. And then you can systematically go through it and and assign priorities to it and put price tags on it and then figure out what the financing is, which is the real fun part. So a couple of the priority projects. The reservoir, this is what provides pressure to the system. I mean, you think reservoirs not really leak, it's really a brick and concrete lined vault. It's, they say it was constructed in nineteen fourteen. It may actually be older than that. I there's references to it on a fire insurance map from nineteen oh three, so I'm not sure. But anyway, it's ancient. And holds two hundred thirty thousand gallons. It's up on North Star Avenue in Hopeful Township because of the elevation difference is what gives us our pressure. We know it's leaking. We have spent in the last two years, we've launched a very intensive leak detection and repair program with our system. We realized we were losing a lot of water into the ground and we have built in monitors that are logged every month that actually detect leaks in the system and we have a professional under contract to do that. We've been able to mitigate a lot of that. But now that we're dealing with the things that we can find in the system, we're no, we still are losing some water that we think is coming from the reservoir. And we had an inspected, a camera inspection, we had a professional company come to look at it and it's a mess. And I think the determination was it probably can't be repaired, it needs to be replaced. So the engineer's estimate for that is one point seven million. And that would be one of the first things that we would do if we decided to keep the system. Water mains, especially along Broad Street, seven thousand linear feet. Some of the older mains go back to nineteen oh four. They're actually in better shape than the stuff that was put in in the sixties. The post war stuff, I think it was junk and and I think also it wasn't installed properly. But to complicate it under Broad Street, there's eight to ten inches of steel reinforced concrete. This is a broken jackhammer bit I threw there just for fun because that's what happens if you try to go through the concrete with that. So it means you have to use a diamond saw and saw cut through the stuff. Adds to your project costs a lot. So we're looking at about four point eight million. Now that also includes all the valves along the way that are connected to the other lines. It also includes the borough owned portion of lead service walkways along Broad Street. And that's where we have a group of forty four, what are called lead boost nicks, which are little short sections of lead pipe that connect the the service connection to the house to the main. And so those are all underneath this. So basically, what we're gonna do is abandon the old main, put in a new main, new connections along that whole way. Big price tag. And this is a picture of a boost nix, if anybody wants to see what it looks like. Next slide, please. So we have a ten year capital plan that we developed. You know, you can look forward, whether it's ten years, five years, three years, it depends on what you're trying to accomplish. In our case, what we did for the purpose of our forecasting here was thinking, well, let's look at the next decade and see what are the priority projects that we really need to deal with and then figure out what the financing would be for that and what the implications would be for the borough. We thought ten years was a good framework to do that. And so these are color coded, so you can see year by year, you know, what we're doing. And and number one priority really is replacing a reservoir because not only is that critical in terms of if it failed, that would be a big problem in terms of providing pressure to the system, but also we're losing a fair amount of water out of it. Next would be West Broad Street, huge water main replacements. And additionally, some in the following year, the so reservoir, well communication systems and so on, that actually what what controls the the wells and the the distribution of the water and emergency generators, which is so our little piece of resiliency is happening. Actually, emergency generators in our wells, which we don't have. And both the wells, by the way, are located within flood hazard areas, I'm mentioning. Now, they were situated there long ago and, you know. There's a pause in this in twenty twenty nine and this is Brian, I mean, we just put that in there, I think, just having to do with the cycle of the funding. Did you want to?
Yeah, it's 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 just based on the on the timing, the projects, just to allow, you know, some time to get the projects actually done and and through.
So, okay. And then East Broad Street, the other half, the big one. So that's our five year priority list. That's the stuff that in the first five years, we think we absolutely had to do. And and next is are the other projects that in the following five years of the ten year plan. So we have water mains and these, a lot of these water main replacements are gonna be in conjunction with street projects. But this, you know, based on the knowledge of the mains and the condition. And by the way, that's talking to our engineers, but also talking to the people that are on the ground that actually know the equipment and see this stuff whenever they do a repair and they know what the condition of the system is. And water meter replacements, that's a a big one too. Our meters are pretty old and what happens with meters is they get old, is they start to under register. They don't hold a register, you can't make them go faster. When they under register, you're potentially losing revenue. And the other thing is the new meters now to be read electronically. So instead of our guys having to go spend two days going to every single house, they could literally drive down the street and download the data and have the readings. So that would be a big change. Fire hydrants, this is more routine stuff. Let's see. Please, yeah, seven thirty, yep.
Want to go to the next one? Sorry.
And this is, you know, go through all the all the details of it, but basically he got the gist of it. And, you know, things like fire hydrants and and valves, other valves, we've sort of spread out over that period of time. So grand total, based on our engineer's estimates for all this, is is over eleven million dollars. And I I will tell you that if you had said this to me three years ago, I would not have believed it. I mean, it was only when we went through the full process of the asset management plan and put price tags on these things that I, we realized the magnitude of what these costs are and what it is that we have to do. Next slide, please. Oh, and here's the really fun part, you're gonna need me after this. Okay, budget forecasting. So so what we did was we said, and and actually, this is, I think, your.
Yeah, I could jump in, give you a break if you want.
Yeah, why don't you take over and I can.
Right.
I'll be tired, keep talking.
Well, thanks again, everyone, for for having me. So again, Brian Morris with Phoenix Advisors. So I've been helping out on the finance part of this, the financial impact. So we're gonna talk a little bit about budget forecasting, financing that eleven million dollar capital plan, rate projection, what that means to the borough's water budget and water rates. And then finally, if a sale goes through, what that could mean to the current fund. I might call it the current fund, general fund, that's just the regular budget, the municipal budget that we think of. So first off, this is just a graphical representation of that ten year capital plan. You can see a lot of the big items in the front here that David spoke to, that pause in twenty twenty nine and eleven point one million over the term. What I will say, just to point out, is this is all in addition to the two point four roughly part of the well remediation that's federally funded. So this is all that needs to be actually financed outside of that grant money, just to kind of put that in perspective. So again, it's it's a pretty sizable figure. And again, also, Dave will speak this a little more later. We can't really project what's gonna happen in the future. There might be new environmental regulations, things happen, right? So this is again just what we are best estimate based on what we have today, what we know and what the engineers see come down the line, that that will need to improve upon. So when you model out all that debt service, this is, this is what it looks like. So this red line here is the current debt service in the utility, about a hundred, a little under a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. The total debt right now is only about five hundred and fifty thousand. So again, we're talking eleven point one million compared to five hundred and fifty thousand total principal now. So a lot of the slides that I'm gonna go through are gonna have two versions of the same slide. The reason that we did that is this state has a financing program called the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank. So they offer very attractive financing terms for local municipalities. That includes portions that are interest free. It includes portions that are grant funded, which we call principal forgiveness. So and it includes even the market rate funding is is usually a better interest rate than local towns could achieve as well. So it's a really great tool. And again, in order to present both a optimistic case and, you know, a less optimistic case, we wanted to show essentially no principal forgiveness. So that's that seventeen point two million of total debt service over that time, the bigger blue mountain. And then with fifty percent principal forgiveness, that's the smaller orange, eight point nine billion. But I think the point of this is really just to show that financing these projects is a significant undertaking, even in the most optimistic scenario, especially compared to the current water budget, which is only about eight hundred thousand. So at a certain point, the debt service by itself will eclipse the entire current budget. So this just goes into a little bit more detail about those programs. So in addition, the the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, which I discussed, is in the middle here. There's also USDA grant funding programs available for long term low interest loans. A lot of those are based on affordability criteria. So based on the borough's median household income, it's unlikely that we would apply for those or receive those. The I bank funding, again, also has certain affordability components to it. So again, we estimated, just to be safe, the fifty percent principal forgiveness or zero percent. You know, certain other towns, based on their wealth levels, get one hundred percent principal forgiveness, but that's unfortunately not not the case here. And then there's congressional and state legislative appropriations where the borough has reached out to the legislators and and tried to get this funding, but has never received it in the past. So we didn't wanna, you know, assume that we would get something in the future. So these are all being explored constantly by the administration and the team to make sure, you know, we're we're checking everything that's available. So again, the next couple of slides are gonna show some projections. Again, the projections are based on the information that we have at hand today. You know, conservative, our best judgment estimates. You know, nothing's perfect, things are going to change, you know, but we wanted to be able to present, you know, what we see as as a potential outcome here. So so again, the 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 two point three four million grant would be used for the well remediation. The new budget projections incorporate those operational costs that David spoke to, that about a hundred and six thousand, I think. So we decided so energy, uh, energy costs, laboratory costs, what have you. The two hundred fifty thousand New Jersey American water purchase would decrease over time. It's not gonna go away right away, but as the new well comes online, that cost will phase out. There is a about a fifteen thousand dollar fee that would still be paid for the the standby service in the event that it's needed. We applied four percent annual escalators for salaries, benefits and operating expenses just based on where we've seen costs coming in with just greater macroeconomic factors, inflation, what have you. You know, we've seen that frankly be between three and four percent. And if you're talking about health benefits specifically, as you may know, that's going up across the board. State Health Benefits Plan, which the borough is a member, went up twenty five percent or so a couple of years ago and is gonna go up thirty six percent next year as well. So I think frankly, four percent might be conservative. Again, it assumes no new regulatory requirements. We don't know what's gonna what's gonna happen. And then, as I spoke to, we we finance all the capital improvements through a mix of the low interest loans. So with some of the principal forgiveness that I spoke to. So this is the budget projection for the next ten years based on no principal forgiveness. The budget comprised of three items, salaries and benefits for the borough employees, the operating budget, which includes the water purchase, maintenance supplies, the technical items, insurance, electricity, what have you, and then, of course, the debt service. So again, looking at year one, said about eight hundred thousand, almost doubling over the course of ten years. This red line I just wanted to put on there to show salaries and benefits and operating budget. It's really, they are not the ones driving it. It really, it doesn't really increase until the end here. You see it goes up and then drops down once that bulk purchase is off the board because of the well remediation. But it's really the debt service from that eleven point one million dollars, which is really driving the case here. And then on the next slide, we'll see the fifty percent principal forgiveness scenario. So again, no changes to the salaries and benefits or operating budget. The debt service numbers are lower for sure, but it's still a pretty significant increase, about fifty percent budget increase over that ten year period. So that's the annual water budget. Now we are looking at the water cost to the average user, which we discussed is twelve thousand gallons per quarter. So as as same thing with budget, ninety three percent ten year cumulative increase. These are the percentage annual increases that comes back from the original financial report that we prepared prior to this process starting. So and again, it's it's really mostly driven by the debt service upfront. There's some additional costs from the the technical items that we mentioned before. So you're looking at in the in the first couple of years, six percent, twenty percent, a couple of years, the two percent, twelve percent. You know, that's just based on that that hiatus in twenty twenty nine, so you get a little break and then increases again from there. So the annual cost to the average user is about twelve hundred dollars per year, which we talked about before, the hundred dollar per month number that Lee mentioned, increasing to twenty three hundred, which is nearly two hundred dollars per month. Under the fifty percent principal forgiveness scenario, obviously, as you would expect, the numbers are lower. But again, it's still a fifty percent increase over ten years. So a pretty substantial increase to the average bill from about a hundred dollars per month to about a hundred fifty dollars per. So David, I can turn back to you for the water.
Thank you, Brian. And I wanted to mention, you know, when our list of assumptions, the one that we had underlined that said no new regulatory changes in effect would cause to run the system. That's probably not a valid assumption. I mean, we put it in there because we want to be concerned about costs and here's why. So I've been around long enough, for twenty seven years, doing this to know the regulatory changes that we have had. We used to have four operated wells in this town. Now we have one at the moment. And the reason is because of changes in treatment standards that we couldn't afford to comply with. And that's why we buy some of our water from New Jersey American. So the the earliest one was arsenic and that was around around two thousand when the state adopted a new standard for arsenic. And our well had already installed five years before. I think was running about thirty or thirty five parts per unit personally, then the new standard was five. So we either had to find a way to treat it or shut the well down, which we did and weren't using it much at the time. We still had three wells left, so we were able to basically function, as I said, that well, number six was mostly sort of an extra. And then around, it was about two thousand and six, was the radionuclide rule where they changed both the standards and the sampling protocol for radionuclides. And in two wells up in our Burton Avenue facility that failed for radio two twenty six and total uranium, two different radioactive isotopes, two different treatment systems. Both of them are expensive to operate and both of them requiring a new building to house them. We did a pilot study on that. We estimated the cost. We compared that to the cost of purchasing water from New Jersey American. And the costs were definitely more than New Jersey American, but also the most expedient path, because we were nominally, we had a year to get into compliance, was to put in the interconnection. We happened to be fortunate because New Jersey American had extended their service to King's Path east of town and they were within about three hundred feet of the borough for a completely unrelated reason. And so to actually bring the interconnection to us meant closing that small gap at our expense. And now we have the interconnection. So this is just to give you an idea. So all this has happened and then we, of course, have PFOS. So this is in the last twenty years, really, a little over twenty years, that we've had basically four different treatment parameters change. And there's a whole list of compounds known as emerging contaminants and the list kind of grows by the day. And those are things that are not currently regulated, but were. And those are things that are not currently regulated, but where people in the public health community have concerns about them. And or they might be things that are regulated, but they don't think the standards are low enough. So it's a bit of a long way to think, but I just want you to understand that based on our experience, looking toward the next couple of decades. It's pretty unlikely that there won't be any regulatory changes. Anyway, having said that, um so we're gonna talk about rate forecasting. I always like to start with um some explanation of how people use water, how much water they use. Um and so you're gonna see, this is a histogram, and it shows you basically uh the number of customers. Uh based on water usage, so this is in thousands, zero to two thousand, five thousand, ten thousand, fifteen thousand per quarter, right? That's how we bill it per quarter rather than per month. Um the blue bars are residential customers, the the orange ones are commercial. Um so you can see obviously predominantly that residential customers. What you also see is that the high volume users, in fact, some of them are up there a hundred and fifty thousand gallons uh or more. Uh some of them are in this room um for quarter. I had to actually put a little break in the graph because I couldn't fit them on there at fifteen, you know. But anyway, a little bit of a little bit of sleight of hand, but at any rate. Um and you can see those, so they are businesses like restaurants that use a lot of water. And also, there's a laundromat in town that uses a lot of water. And so that is essential, that's an essential input to their businesses and they are essential to the community. Um you could go back one second, Ryan, yeah, thanks. Again, we talked about the average user, about twelve thousand gallons. Um there are also people that use two thousand gallons or less. Uh and 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 we're gonna talk about those a little bit later because uh we talked about rate impacts. But I just want you to remember that there's a there's a certain portion of population that uses relatively small amount of water. And some of those are residential customers, some of them are commercial customers that just have offices and they have a toilet and they flush it twice a day, and that's all they do. Uh okay, next slide please. So the other thing that I'll drive you through is just an understanding of rate structure. And you know, they're not gonna be testing you on this, but it's about you to understand generally how this works. We have a fairly complicated tiered system based on how much water you use. Essentially, your rate gets higher with your consumption. Um it's not actually the way New Jersey American does it, it's not made law by. We have essentially a flat user charge, a debt of about six six fifty nine dollars per quarter. For that first zero to two thousand gallons of water that you use. On top of that, we then have a charge based on the number, how many gallons you use. And it's it it the rates kind of escalate after a certain point and now they kind of fall off. But um you don't need to remember all of that. But the main thing I want you to recognize is there's a fixed portion to this fee. And there's what we call the volumetric portion, which is the part that's per gallon. And one of the reasons that's important to understand is that if you're comparing costs. Uh the actual total cost for somebody's bill, obviously, that varies with how much water you use, but the cost per gallon varies too. Because when you when you're a high volume user, these fixed costs tend to get um kind of absorbed. And the dominant factor is really the volumetric part, okay? This is our rates are pretty helpful for us, right, next slide please. This is the rate structure for New Jersey American. Um and again, you know, you have the fixed portion, and here you have the basic service fee, which is similar to our fee, this is monthly. Um there are also a couple of other fixed charges that are added on to there. There's a distribution system improvement charge, it's called, there's a resilience and environmental system investment charge. These are surcharges that are approved and regulated by the Board of Public Utilities, as all these rates are. That have to do with recovering costs for infrastructure improvements. Um and uh so those are added on to these. And also, the other thing to understand is that the service fees, I have here a five eighth inch meter, I'm listing. Hope well, we don't change our fees according to the size of your meter and the diameter of your connection. But most, you know, uh larger utilities do. So in this case, when we're doing comparisons, we're talking about a five inch, five eighth inch meter, which is what most uh residential users have. Then there's the volumetric part, and the the main part of that is this water charge. And and then additionally, there are some other surcharges that are added on to that. Um the purchase water adjustment cost charge uh reflects the cost of New Jersey Americans. Uh uh purchasing of water from other systems, correct? And we want to restrain, you know, and the lead service line replacement charge, it's a surcharge that they add on. To recover the cost of lead service line replacements that are, and and I didn't really talk about this in detail before, but this it's mandated by law. All quote lead service lines in all water systems in New Jersey have to be replaced or removed by July twenty second, twenty thirty one. Ten year timeframe for this, so whether you're a publicly owned uh utility like ours or or a regulated public utility. You have to do it by then. And um so and the way the law is actually written, it actually says that investor owned utilities have to recover their costs. By applying a surcharge to their customers, and that's how it's done. And they um I think telling you much more about than I can, but they have to basically on a six month cycle. Explain what projects have been done, what have been completed, what the costs were, how many customers they have, there's a whole process. If you wanna look at a foundational filing, they're about a hundred and fifty pages long, and it's all explained and it's all justified. And the VPU reviews this and decides whether they agree, and all of it every six months that happened. Same is true with the lead service line, so um it's not sleight of hand, it's actually based on real things that are being done and real costs. Uh next slide please. Okay, so we're going to be talking about. Costs in the future in terms of what we call nominal value or inflation adjusted value. Actually, mostly we're gonna talk about nominal value, but there are essentially two ways of looking at costs with respect to time. The nominal value is the amount that you pay for something at a particular time irrespective of inflation. The inflation adjusted or real value, if you're looking retrospectively. Take that price, that value, somebody paid for something at the time, and then look at it, compare that to current dollars. To see how it would how it would be rendered in current dollars. So in other words, if you had ten percent inflation in the last five years, uh if you're looking at a cost from five years ago. You would say, well, what does that cost at twenty twenty five dollars? Um and it's important to do that, because if you look at it in a nominally, you can. I'll show you why, and then um inflation has a huge effect on these things in terms of the real effect on people. Okay, so uh this is just a a graph actually from the um Bureau of Labor Statistics. And it's showing you the consumer uh price index, the CPI uh going back to two thousand and five. Uh we don't have to make this an economics lecture, but basically what the CPI is, is it looks back twelve months. At the cost that the prices paid by consumers for a standardized basket of goods, if you will, and compares it to the present. And it's a way of looking at inflation. The reason I'm showing you this is obviously this is COVID, when things were going crazy. Uh you know, CPI was, you know, going up around eight percent, it's now, you know, come down. But this is why the difference between nominal and actual or nominal and real. Okay, next slide please. Okay, so we uh are trying to find a way to. Forecast uh what New Jersey Americans water, our cost might be in the future. And now this is absolutely sleight of hand stuff, because it's the future, we don't have a crystal ball. You're trying to model it based on hopefully a set of reasonable assumptions, but you don't, you can't predict the future. So what what we did was to say, well, let's look at the last ten years. And look at the history of rate changes by New Jersey American over that period. And since we are looking at our rate changes over the next coming ten years. Let's take a a rear view look of ten years and see what happened and see what happens if we project that same trend going forward ten years. It's not perfect, all sorts of things could happen that we don't know. And it's a model, and as one of my professors said years ago, all models are wrong, it's just that some are more wrong than others. So um but we think that a ten year look back. Is probably the best unbiased, objective model that we can use to predict what's happening going forward. Recognizing that's just a model. And again, we looked at nominal and actual, this is where you can actually see the difference. So so the nominal uh this heavy line is the nominal change in the cost. Annual cost for a user of twelve thousand gallons per quarter, that would be our average user uh in the last ten years. The real cost, which is adjusted into June twenty twenty five dollars, I did this in June. Um is the dash line here, and you can see it much flatter, right? And that's why you make that adjustment. So this is kind of the change that you actually see in terms of dollars that you're spending and how it affects your life. This is the nominal amount. Um the other thing we did was, we said, well, so let's look at the annualized rate of change during this ten year period. Uh no, oh by the way, I'm sorry, um I should say this. Projecting forward, we're gonna project forward in nominal and not real, because we don't know what inflation is going to be. So if we're gonna make a comparison between Hopewell Borough and New Jersey American, you can really only do it in nominal terms. Um but I I just want you to understand the difference. So again, a ten year look back, and then we said, okay, if if you you take the starting value. And this ending value nominally, and uh there's a way of calculating the annualized rate of change. So in other words, every year, it's like a compounded interest rate essentially, similar to what you'd have in an investment. What what would that be, five point one percent, we just rounded it to five, because obviously we're not dealing with high levels of precision. And we said, okay, based on this, we are gonna use that as a basis of comparison projecting forward. And see what costs would be for New Jersey American water and Hopewell water. I mean, our our costs are based on our projection of our capital needs and all the budgetary work that Brian's done. Um again, um so uh next slide please. Just for comparison, this is what our curve looks like going back ten years. Um and you can see the rate change is actually significantly higher, uh the rates are also higher, but I just wanted you to see it. So their annualized rate of change for New Jersey Americans is about five percent, ours is six point six. Um and the real annualized rate of change for us is about three point four percent, I believe, for New Jersey Americans, one point nine. Uh this is not really part of our modeling going forward, but I just wanted you to see that as a comparison. Um the next slide please. Okay, so now um these two curves are our projected Hopewell Borough. Water cost for an average user of twelve thousand gallons. Um and one is incorporating that fifty percent principal forgiveness assumption. So about half of the principal and interest uh on the financing would would come from uh forgiveness or grants, whatever. And the other, and this is without it, so these are, you know, our likely real cost is somewhere probably between these two limits. And this is what New Jer, what the cost would be under New Jersey American, again, using a five percent annualized rate of increase. That I think is the best estimate we have, but isn't perfect. Um and as you can see, you're starting off obviously with a lower cost. But what's also interesting is if you look at the rate of change, you know, um again, our our costs appear to be going up. Well, under the fifty percent principal forgiveness scenario, I would say these these trends are roughly parallel. But under the, with no principal forgiveness, clearly our costs are going up faster. Um so again, um not a prediction, not a perfect model, there's no such thing. It's the best uh prediction tool that we've come up with. Uh we we developed this independently, we had no conversations with New Jersey American about it, and we can't ask them to predict the future either. Um but and the other thing I'll tell you about this, this five percent, is if you go back farther in time. To develop that trend to figure out what it is, the percentage is less. Um you know, we did, and if you attended our last presentation, we focused intensively on a fifteen year retrospective analysis of rates. Of New Jersey American and Hopewell Borough. And that gave you a number of four percent over fifteen years. But when we talked about this, we thought, you know, if we're looking forward ten years, we should look back ten years. You know, we should just be, in a sense, even handed, using the same methodology going both ways. And so that's why we went to ten years, we checked to do a higher increase rate increase. Okay, so that's the average user. This is for the two thousand gallon per quarter user, and in this case, it's currently the situation. That a user of two thousand gallons per quarter pays a little bit more than that a Hopewell Borough customer does. And that case is really not going to change. I mean, I think the disparity in terms of uh is is not changing much when you look at the parallels of these lines. Um the reason that our rates at two thousand gallons or less are less than New Jersey Americans. Is because we have been subsidizing those rates, basically asking our other rate payers to pay more. To offset the cost for low volume users. And what we've never really known is how many of those low volume users and people that are. Struggling with income and how many of them are just people that don't use much water. I mean, again, if you have a business, for example, and you you don't use a lot of water uh for an office. Um but we always thought that it was philosophically, we thought it was important to, in effect. Subsidize the lowest volume users, because that's kind of the essential amount that anybody needs just to live. Um we've been doing that for a long time, but what that's also done is it's created a disparity where our businesses. The high volume users tend to be paying more than they would under. For example, New Jersey American or other rate scenarios. But we wanted to um show you this, I noticed for this, also mentioned that. This difference in annual cost is something that we think that we can mitigate, because we are not selling our sewer system. And we actually have control over the revenue from that. And interestingly enough, uh the person who paid, who only uses two thousand gallons. Uh they pay more for their sewer right now than they do for their water, and the reason is our our fixed rate. Uh threshold is ten thousand gallons, say, zero to ten thousand gallons, you're paying the same for sewer, you're paying ninety dollars per quarter. So we think we can adjust that rate structure, so that the people that are in this low volume uh get a bit of a break. And we can probably close that gap. Um I haven't had a chance to work through all the numbers, but we we certainly have the ability to do that, uh because we control our sewer rates. Okay, next slide please.
David, just before I go to the next slide, just to.
Yep.
That total amount of money they were talking about for the few people in this scenario, a single digit thousand dollars for the entire system, something in that range per year?
Well, so let's see if it's uh. Sixty and ninety, so about thirty dollars per quarter, a hundred twenty dollars, and you're times. Well, let's say forty eight users at the worst, you know, yeah, so it's mark the six thousand dollars, it's not, it's not a lot of money. So it's, we could do it, um and 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 actually, I think we can do it without anybody really being affected by it very much. And I think it's actually, the only reason that we didn't have the water rate schedule in sync with the sewer rate schedule. Is because the sewer has never been an economic problem. We've always been making these adjustments on water and subsidies and so on, and it it's kind of been the child that gets all the attention. And I realized years later that we, most municipalities and systems have a similar rate structure for sewer water, for obvious reasons. So you can make sense out of it, but we haven't been doing that, so it's time we did that anyway. Um, okay, so here's the big differences, and some of them are in this room, glad to see you're here. Um so a restaurant, for example, or a laundromat, using a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a quarter. Um I have two lines here for New Jersey American, and the reason is that if you're a large user. You're probably not using a five eighth inch meter, you might have a meter as large as a two inch diameter. And the fixed costs are larger for the larger connections. So if you're using a large quantity of water, your costs are gonna be somewhere between these two lines. And this is what your cost would be for Hopewell Borough now, and again, that you pretend principal forgiveness or no principal forgiveness. Um so at the end of this ten year cycle, again, this is using our five percent projection, such as it is. Um it would suggest that you would be at five percent um at the same place here in ten years. As you are paying right now, uh at least for a for a five inch meter, obviously a bit more. You know, under the worst case scenario for us, twenty one thousand dollars a year nominally. Again, we don't know what inflation would be, but pretty much a doubling of the cost. So those are the three scenarios that we covered, you know, the average high end user and lowest user, so you can kind of see what effects are. Um next slide please.
So gonna switch gears a little bit here and talk about the the other municipal budget. Everything you've heard so far has been about the water budget, water rates, et cetera. But the other big part of the sale is that six point four million dollar purchase price. So in addition to all the rate discussion, that six point four million by law is generally required to be used to pay down debt. As I mentioned before, and we'll talk about in a little more detail, uh the borough has about five hundred fifty thousand of utility debt. So the rest of that can go towards the general capital debt. Uh so on the next slide, you'll see a breakdown of the municipal budget. So this is the regular municipal budget, uh as Mary Kay mentioned, about four and a half million dollars. So this is the regular municipal budget, uh, as Mary Kay mentioned, about four and a half million dollars currently. Of that debt service is about nine hundred and eighty five thousand. I'm going to generally call it a million dollars just for ease of reference purposes. Uh, it's about twenty percent of the current budget. Uh, it's about thirty eight percent of the current tax levy that supports that budget. And again, we'll go into a little bit more detail, but that six point four million can pay off all of the municipal debt. So that roughly one million dollars will be freed up going forward to be used for other borough priorities. That could be uh, other capital projects, you know, paving the roads, uh, whatever other types of uh, priorities uh, the, the borough has. Uh, expansion of municipal services, tax relief, you know, any combination. It's assessed money that's freed up as part of the annual budget uh, to be used towards other items other than your debt service. So this is uh, a little wonky, so bear with me here, but this is essentially a summary of the debt service. So as I mentioned on the water utility side, it's about five hundred and fifty thousand. The general improvement size is about six point four million. Um, so together, they're about seven point one million in aggregate. However, uh, the borough also has a one point seven million dollar reserve to pay debt service, which is just a common budgetary um, accounting thing throughout the state that many towns have. Essentially, it can be used to help offset debt service costs and kind of smooth out the budget over time. So with that one point seven plus the six point four, there's a total eight point two million dollars that can be used to pay off the debt. So that would clearly cover the seven point one, pay off all the debt as I showed on the prior slide, uh, as well as there are some projects that the borough's been doing, uh, which we call authorized but not issued. So they've approved the, the project, started spending money, but haven't actually taken out the debt to finance it yet. But, but since the money's spent, we'll need to be financed, so it'll take out a piece of that as well. Uh, talk to for a future debt issues. So on the next slide, uh, we have the ten year total community savings. So this factors in the uh, in, in the uh, purple here on the back, you have the Hopewell Borough water cost, the current cost to the community of, of the water, as well as the municipal debt service, that roughly one million dollars. Um, and then in orange, uh, under, under a sale would be the new New Jersey American water uh, cost. That's essentially the delta there is that thirty six uh, percent number that was mentioned uh, prior. And then on top of that is ranging from one point two million, uh, pretty much the, on average uh, throughout time. And that one point two is a function of the one million dollars of debt that would be paid off, as well as the community savings from the water cost. So this really combines everything that we've been talking about. It's your municipal debt savings from using the six point four million, and it's your water savings from the reduction rates that we just talked about. So this is the fifty percent principal forgiveness scenario. That's twelve million dollars uh, over the next ten years. So obviously, it's quite a substantial amount of money uh, that uh, the, the borough community would spend under the keep the utility scenario versus uh, what they would save, or what you would save under a sale uh, scenario. Uh, to the average home, uh, it is about uh, fair, about fifteen hundred dollars uh, per year on average, just to quantify what that means. Um, to the average home. On the next slide is the no principal forgiveness scenario. Um, so obviously, the numbers are just even higher, uh, increasing from about one point two million up to about one point six million. Um, and that's just a, a function of the, the Hopewell Borough water cost going up uh, higher, you know, than it was in the prior uh, scenario. So significant savings, that's fourteen million dollars over the ten year period, uh, which equates to about eighteen hundred dollars uh, to the average home.
Hey, Brian, I'm going to interrupt you just for a second because that, that writing on the bottom is so small. I don't know if people in the back can see it. Can you just really quickly, maybe people don't need this, but just say what the pink is, the blue is, just so everyone's clear, because this is a really
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely. So uh, the, the pink is the Hopewell Borough water cost, right? So that's what we're paying now, that's what we looked at before in the budget projections that I went through previously. That's what you're currently paying and what we would expect or project based on the assumptions and the projections that we, that I laid out earlier. The blue is the current debt service from the uh, the, the town. That's that roughly one million dollar number. Uh, again, that doesn't include any new or future debt or anything, it's just what would be paid off from this sale. So that's the savings uh, from the, the budget. And then uh, in the bars, the orange is the New Jersey American water uh, cost, based on, again, the projections that we laid out previously, uh, with the delta, the white uh, bar there, the delta being the saving. So uh, again, if, if the utility is held by the borough in this no principal forgiveness scenario, the cost to the community would be the blue, um, the total of the, the purple and the blue. Um, under a sale scenario, essentially you'd get the orange with this money freed up to, to be used towards other borough priorities, other capital projects, whatever you know.
Thank you.
Uh, and then uh, just a couple bullet points to kind of tie everything together. Um, so even though the O M uh, from the bulk water purchase is expected to increase in the short term, um, the new debt service, as I mentioned, is projected to increase substantially to the tune of between four to eight hundred thousand. And again, nearly doubling uh, the debt service alone, nearly doubling the current budget. Um, based on those debt service projections over the next ten years, the borough water cost is projected to increase between fifty and ninety three percent based on that scenario. As uh, David mentioned, in all likelihood, it's somewhere between there. You know, we've tried to show you kind of a, a low bound and upper bound as to where that could be. Through a sale, uh, as we just looked at on the last slide, the water cost will decrease by that, um, that, you know, roughly thirty six percent uh, number to the average customer. Um, as well as pay off all of the uh, debt. So you'd have that savings of um, a million dollars per year from debt, from paying off the debt. And then the total cost, total community savings over ten years of either, you know, between fourteen or twelve and fourteen million, depending on the scenario. And again, just to put it in perspective, you know, between sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred to the average home, you know, based on the side of the community. And I know we talked a lot about um, about this before, but it's really, you know, it's an economy, it's a scale thing at the end of the day, right? The eight hundred customers versus American Water's, you know, seven hundred thousand in customers.
Um, so a lot of Just to clarify that fifteen fifty to eighteen hundred dollar figure, that's an annual figures. That's a total of that, say, average water user saving about four hundred dollars or so on the water bill, and the rest would be the impact of the debt savings?
Uh, that is an annual figure, yes. So if you're looking over the ten years, you know, you're, you're looking at fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars.
Thank you, Brian. Just a few more slides left and we'll be able to get to, to questions.
Um, so really, this is kind of closing bars our presentation, and I, I want to urge you all to, when you're thinking about this and what you think is the right choice for the community, I want to urge all of you to look beyond just the water utility. Um, we have a small town, it's very challenging to be a small town in this environment. It's amazing, in my time on council, how many unfunded mandates have come from Trenton, that bills introduced by people from large cities that have no idea what it costs to, how to run a small town. We have two full-time administrative staff and one half-time person. Public works in one or it's five people, they do it all, and they do an extraordinary job. But that's because of extraordinary level of dedication and hard work on their part. Um, it really is a struggle, and people don't see it every day. As long as we're delivering services and we're more or less doing a decent job, they don't realize how hard it is to keep this going. And um, and this is not fear mongering, but I think it's, we shouldn't assume that Hopewell Borough can always remain a Hopewell Borough, that we can remain fiscally sound indefinitely at this scale. It is a struggle, we, we need grants, we get them for things like our paving projects, uh, which we fortunately beginning every year for the state. We've gotten other grants to help us a lot. Honestly, I think if we had to pay for repaving all of our own roads, I, I don't know if we'd be doing it. And um, there are good reasons for us to remain as a borough. I think in terms of the quality of life that we all enjoy and that we love here. Um, but it is something that requires a lot of deliberation, a lot of thought, a lot of hard work just to manage in this environment. Um, I'd like you to think about some of the things that Brian has pointed out in terms of the fiscal impact on the community, and then put that in the context of some other community priorities that we have, things that we need to worry about every day, that again, people don't think about all the time. Resilience is a big one, okay? Uh, Henry and I did a lot of damage in this town. Um, and you know, I'm going to have a little slide to talk about that a little bit more. Sanitary sewer infiltration, boy, is that a sexy topic. Uh, okay, that, that, that is basically the process of stormwater uh, getting into our sanitary sewer and then, you know, clear water that isn't contaminated, then going to our sewer plant, having to be treated. So I N I, we call it, is a big deal, and it just happens from, you know, leakage in the pipes. It's, it's, it's the opposite of losing water from our water system into the ground. It's actually the sewer collection system gaining stormwater and then having it go to the plant. So it increases the cost to the borough. And um, and we're, we have a proposal right now for about thirty five thousand dollars to do testing, just to figure out what we need to do. But we're going to have capital need for that. Traffic safety and comedy projects, anybody who lives in this town knows this has been a major priority. We've had great leadership on the council from Krista Weaver and others on this for several years. Um, those things cost money. We would like to be able to provide some support to the Hopewell Fire Department and the EMS uh, in, in various ways. Stormwater compliance and infrastructure related stormwater is a whole set of regulatory burdens that has changed in the last couple of years. Um, and, and is costing us a lot of money. Um, and just more general things like community development, and, and that's a general term, but improved access and coordination for parents. We've heard a lot from businesses and from applicants for planning board applications and so on. Um, you know, we have part-time people doing this, they're doing the best they can, but what I'm suggesting is that on some of these fronts, if we had just a little bit more flexibility, um, it might improve things in town and it also help us, I think, to kind of stay in business. But next slide, please. And so I'll talk about resilience in a little more dramatic terms because uh, the I N I, I mean, everybody knows what happened in town. This is Hard Avenue. Um, I, I actually, when they hold all this debris on the street in the stream that they had at Stockpile, I went and measured it out, it came out to uh, probably about three hundred tons. So that's about twelve of those big gravel trucks that you see going through town. That's how much stuff we had to take out of the stream. And this has happened before, and it's going to happen again, these are storm drains that are completely filled with stone. Um, we, there are some of these things we may never be able to manage, but there's certainly some low hanging fruit that we should be looking at. But it costs money just to do the initial engineering scoping, just go around and say, well, what do you think? They have an opportunity over here, that's not doing the design, that's just kind of teeing things up for engineers to think about. Then you got to spend some money for them to really think about it and use the design, and then start pursuing grants to do those things. So those are, this is, you know, resiliency is a long-term issue. Um, it's, it's, these things are going to happen again, and we need to be focusing on that, and it costs money. Um, second, next slide, please. And again, this is the I N I thing I should have already talked about, but not only does it reduce our costs with the sewer, it also reduces our share of the debt service for the Stoneyberg Sewer Authority. And very importantly, um, our plant, our sewer plant has a fixed capacity. And there's not all that much capacity left right now. And so for us to be able to do whatever future development we want to do in the borough, um, it's critical that we actually reduce the I N I, because the I N I is essentially taking away capacity from the plant. We're treating water that we shouldn't have to treat. Uh, and, and the Stoneyberg Sewer Authority is estimated, we may be able to actually uh, restore uh, quite a bit of capacity that we don't currently have. Anyway, that's one of our last original manholes, manholes of Hopewell. Anyway, um, next slide is, if it's, um, and that's sort of the closer. But a, again, I just, um, thank you so much for coming. Thank you so much for taking the time to look at this. Please make use of all the resources that we have on the borough website. We have copies of these presentations and others. Um, ask us questions, write us a talk to us, speak here. Um, think about it, I know this is a lot to digest. Uh, this is, I think, our fourth or fifth presentation that we've been, we've been trying to render this into manageable bites, but you know, some may disagree that this was a manageable bite, but anyway, thank you so much.
So thank you, everyone, for uh, this first part. Um, we have lots of people here um, from the boroughs team, and uh, we, we heard you and, and made uh, Lee from New Jersey American bring all of her people to answer questions about what they might uh, do. Um, very appreciative, David Cherry, uh, Brian in particular, for your work to kind of lay this out. Um, uh, we are, um, a lot of people online, and we'll start with the in-person people. As I said when we started, what we'd like to do is uh, have people come up to the uh, podium, Brian, or the first person could rearrange it, we did move it to the edge of the wall there. Not that we're hoping to cram someone in the corner so much as not block the TV when we're doing a presentation. Um, but uh, those of you who'd like to, to uh, come uh, and, and ask questions, please do. Again, we're going to try to limit the talking portion of the question to three minutes, uh, so that, but, but not the answers. So if you have a short questions uh, with long answers, that's not uh, going to count towards any kind of limit. Um, uh, but ultimately, we'd like to have everyone have a chance uh, and, and get their questions tonight. Um, again, uh, we're also, uh, if you have, want to email our administrator or come to one of our other opportunities every other Wednesday, uh, every second Saturday, uh, for me, uh, email. And we're, are going to plan some other uh, events as well, um, for other types of opportunities for people to, to ask, um, and and so hopefully get some answers. So with, with that, uh, we'll open up the floor, uh, please come up to the front and give us your name. Um, and we'll, we'll do our best to start to directing uh, questions to, to the people we have here in the room.
Good evening, my name is Steve Webb of the Hopewell Fire Department. Uh, one question I have for American Water is, right now, in the northern part of the township, the only hydrants we have are in the borough. If we have a structural fire anywhere in the township, we've got a six thousand pound, a six thousand gallon uh, tanker, and both of our trucks have five hundred gallons. Right now, the borough owns the water. Uh, if we have a structural fire, we have to tap into these hydrants and draw that water. Is there going to be an additional fee to the fire department if we have to, we have access to any of the hydrants for a structural fire?
I think it actually goes to
Well, Leif, I could just, um, uh, thank you, Steve, um, uh, just from a run of show perspective, um, if it's a question for you guys to answer, if you could, just so the camera folks online can get you. If you could stand up, you were actually in the right spot, but just introduce yourself as to who you are, um, and what your, what your role is, and before you
My name, my name is Carmen Teheran, I'm a director of operations for this region. Let me try to restate your question, so you're asking cost of additional cost on fire hydrants?
If there will be a fee to the fire department tapping into the hydrants when we have a structural fire.
No, no, no additional fee other than what we charge from our tariff perspective.
So that'll be, okay, that's all the question I have, thank you.
Uh, my name is, uh, I'm an erst, uh, my question on um, on the rate thesis, so rejection is about five percent a year. Um, there is also a lot of investment that American Water is going to make over the next ten years, right? Uh, I think there's five billion in acquisitions. There's thirty seven billion in infrastructure investments. How is that going to increase the rates? Because you didn't talk about that, all those new investments.
So, Leif, you'd like to have one of your rate people address that?
Um, no, but so, my name is Danny Hall, and I'm the director of rates and regulatory. I will do my best to answer your question, and um, the numbers you're quoting, are they from our
Annual report?
They're from our parent company, so they're all inclusive, they're not just New Jersey American.
Exactly, yeah.
In New Jersey American, we go in for, we obviously make investments in our system, and we have to periodically go in for rate cases. During that time, we will present all of the investments that we've made and all of the, you know, and there's a lot of stuff that makes up a rate case and what goes into the rates. But we will ask for recovery at that time, and we will propose. Um, we do not set our rates, the board sets our rates, Lee's mentioned that, David's mentioned that. Um, so we will propose what we believe to recover the investments that we made. And then the rates will be set by the board. Historically, as shown, it's been around about a five percent annual increase, all surcharge included.
So last year,
So last year, um, the total turnover revenue we had in New Jersey for water alone was nine hundred ninety million. You got approvals for eighty million in New Jersey. What's the percentage on that?
So the eighty million was for water and wastewater, because our total in seventy-nine point five, to be exact, um, was the increase that we were authorized out of the twenty-twenty-four rate case. That covered, um, our revenue requirement, which is the, the nine hundred and nine, the nine hundred million, we're saying, um, to operate the business. All of our investments, all of our expenses, and the financing costs, both that and equity that go into that. The investments we made from that, that seventy-nine point five, um, was authorized for, we made one point three billion dollars of investments from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four. And at the conclusion of that rate case, the customers, for an average user, which, again, five-eighth inch meter, for us, it's five thousand six hundred and forty-two gallons a month, so five dollars, five dollars and thirty-two cent increase in their bill, or sixty-four dollars annually. So we were authorized that seventy-nine point five to cover across our footprint. And the customer impact for the average user was sixty-four dollars a year.
Well, so that number, I, I calculated it. So it's seven point one percent over your water, and it was eight and a half percent over the total, you know, because wastewater is also included, so that's a little over one, one billion total for New Jersey. And you increased the eighty million, so that's a total of eight and a half. I think the, you know, if you look at those increases, and especially going forward, and it's good to look at the history, and yes, that's five percent roughly, but in the history, there are no huge capital investments, right, of, you're going forward, roughly, average per year, ten, uh, four billion. That's, that's many billions more than what you did in the last ten years. So all I'm saying is, if you look ten years forward, you accumulate another forty billion dollars in debt, yes, you're paying off some. Uh, you already have fourteen billion in debt on a four point six billion dollar revenue company. That's a huge amount of debt. You're gonna add a lot of that. That's gonna add a lot of rate increases for us, because once you buy us, we're part of the pool. So if you invest, we pay for that too. So I, I made some calculation. It's more than five percent. It's roughly six point eight. That's coming up for us over the next ten years. That's how much you have to increase to pay for your debt. How, how can you say it's five percent?
Hi, that's Mike McKeever, I'm the Senior Director of Rates and Regulatory. I, I hear you're
They're in your annual report.
No, I understand your basis of the capital spend, your, your percentages and stuff like that. I'd just like to see that analysis. Is there a way we could look at that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Because your company will have to grow from four point six billion to roughly nine billion in ten years. Yeah, in order to stay afloat and make the twenty-four percent net profit you're making. Yeah, currently, you make a lot in that coffee.
I'm, I'm aware, what we, yeah, and I think that varies, you know, it varies from year to year.
Yeah.
Um, and it also varies, you know, of the investment that we're making, um, as well as what the commission is gonna offer us in the future. That could change, you know, we don't know what they're gonna offer us, and they have made changes. Uh, between capital structure, between ROA, whatever it may be. So there's a lot of variables there. But I would like to see the analysis before I can really comment, um, you know, on, on the numbers you're
Apparently, your debt service is roughly about a billion a year with fourteen billion in long-term, short-term debt. You can make the calculation when it's gonna be in ten years, if you take out another forty billion. It's huge. It's gonna be roughly three billion in debt service. We're gonna pay for all of that.
So some of the numbers I think you're quoting are, again, from our, a parent company, which is not just New Jersey American.
Yeah, well, New Jersey, twenty-five percent.
Pennsylvania, it's, but we are, we are one component, and we have that recovery and that capital investment across the entire American water, has to be recovered from that, their commissions, or seek approval through their commission. So it's, it's not all the New Jersey customers are gonna fight.
No, of course not.
You're gonna pay, well, invest in what we seek recovery of. But that, the numbers you're alluding to are for other states as well. So if you, I have my part, I will give you my part, and then if you can help me and I don't know some version, we can, we can look into it.
Good. One last thing, um, four percent of, um, inflation that you've built into the, you know, if we keep the system. I looked at just the wages. So if you compound four percent every year, we are paying our people, the two people or whatever was on, on that water system, one point seven million dollars in fifty years from now. That, that's what four percent does. I don't think the four percent is correct. Our long-term inflation is around two, two and a half. So that's what you probably have to build in. And then that number comes down quite a bit, you know, over fifty years, it's like eight hundred thousand instead of one point seven million, just for wages. So I don't believe, you know, you're eyeballing the numbers if we keep it. And, and the same thing is for the operating cost. The operating cost of four percent, it's not gonna be that much. It's gonna be less. Yes, the financing part, let's, let's pray we get fifty percent forgiveness. Then I've calculated that in ten years from now, the rates would probably be similar to what American Water has, because they will have to increase more than five percent. Now, I put in six point eight five percent. And then lines come together in ten years. I will give you my spreadsheets. I think it's, it's something to look at. I believe we need to keep our system. So I'll have to see.
For our next speaker, Brian, if we just, just looking at, um, and, and I, I, I do mean it, we'd love to see and adjust to your assumptions to see which we should incorporate. We had a discussion about four percent, and we think it's particularly, including, um, insurance might be actually low, but, you know, understood that that, um, can, uh, reasonable people can differ. I just wanna just make sure I understand, though. It's, it's these lines that you believe that will converge, right, that, that you, you believe that we could perhaps be around the same cost as New Jersey American for water. But did, I just wanna be clear, though, was there any calculation as to the, the debt service part of things? And the other part of the, the transaction?
Only the debt service for the water.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Because the general budget of our borough, that's a separate subject. Yeah. We pay, we pay property taxes for that part. The water has nothing to do with the property taxes. That's separate.
It's separate. If you, if, if you don't take into account the fact that twenty percent of our budget is debt service for the municipality, you're saying that's not related? I mean, if that debt service were completely defeased through the sale of the system, you're saying that that doesn't have an impact on the borough? It's almost a million dollars a year in debt service. So you're saying that's separate, it doesn't affect us? How, how is that possible? You pay prop, yes, and so for paying less in property taxes, or if we have more money to do, if we don't have to raise property taxes as much because we've avoided that debt service, that how is, I mean, there is a zero sum on all of this. It's the cost to the community for all the services we have to provide. The notion that the water utility exists as this isolated thing that has no other effect on the finances of the community is simply not realistic, Tom. It isn't. Well, we know because we live it every day, trying to keep this town functional and fiscally solvent, and it's not easy.
Anyway, so, you're next.
Hi, Robert Law, I'm new above the cemetery. Um, thank you, everybody, for showing up today for the presentation. With regard to the referendum, how is that going to be managed for customers of the system that are outside of the borough versus the township at large versus?
Yeah, um, under the, uh, I'll say fortunately or unfortunately, it is just really what how it works, I'll say, and I'll have our attorney chime in to the extent that I get this wrong, which I often do, um, so I'll talk slowly so she can, uh, uh, prepare herself. But ultimately, um, the referendum, uh, because the water system is owned by the borough, the statute would have it go to the borough voters, similarly to the way that, you know, the, uh, when there is a, um, water system that serves like Trenton Waterworks or like us, and please do not compare us to Trenton Waterworks. The governing body of the town, of the host town, sets the rates, um, and as long as the rates are the same in and out of the town, there is no, um, political process essentially for the township rate payers to participate. Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, yep.
Hi, Patty Phillips. I've lived on Hard Avenue for thirty-eight years, something like that. Um, I remember the flood. Most of that damage was on private property, though. Didn't private property owners have to take care of that?
No, the damage, we had about six hundred thousand dollars in, not just Hard Avenue, but across town, we had about six hundred thousand dollars in damage to public streets and our stormwater system. Hard Avenue, most of the damage was, no, there wasn't actually a lot of damage to private property. We, the borough, have an easement where we're required to remove the debris from the stream that goes through the Harthouse, okay? Because those inlets were completely clogged with stone. So that falls on us. That's not the property owner, and all the debris removal from the street falls on us. Uh, what you may not have seen was, there's a forty-two-inch stormwater line underneath Hard Avenue that was completely full of stone. So when you saw those vacuum trucks out there, that's what they were doing, twice, one for each storm. Um, that all falls on us. And it's worth, I'm glad you mentioned it, because, um, you know, we got six hundred thousand dollars from FEMA for the public stuff that we did. I, the way things are going, I'm not sure if we can expect to see that again, but at any rate, um, yeah, that was all Yeah.
If our system is so old and full of lead and terrible things like hard water, which I know, I get grit in the bottom of my eschews. Like, does your company want it? I mean, to me, there must be an incredible profit for you guys after making these ten years. So curious, why do you want it?
So once again, Lee Muller, Director of Business Development, Kim and I and Jenny are part of the development team, so we are out having conversations with communities that are struggling to keep their water and sewer systems afloat. And what we really are here to do is to provide solutions for communities in need. That is what Kim, Jenny and I care about, right? Having conversations with towns.
So you're doing this for us because you care about it?
It is.
Okay.
Well, let me, let me interject, and she won't say this, but they, they, they do, in a, in a way that is, um, tough to wrap one's head around, but the finances of this, um, they're able to do this in ways that we are not, as it turns out. Um, and much of the way that, uh, one might look at like a grant, where everyone in the state pays in to say the corporate business tax, and then perhaps one town gets a grant, and everyone pays for it. They're able to do that and, and make money, and somehow charge us less, as it turns out, and it's, um,
Not necessarily less.
Right now, it's less.
That it'll be less? That it'll stay five percent?
We know that on day one, taking ownership, an average household can see a thirty-six percent decrease in their bill.
Guaranteed.
That is what we have proposed to bring on to the A1 rate schedule.
In writing.
Yeah, it's actually
By the state.
And the, the tariffs, if I could just add, so in the contract that would be executed if this goes forward, they specify their, these, these rate schedules that are actually the, in the tariffs that are established with the BPO approval. And we would go on the same tariff as Princeton and all the communities that are around us.
Another question.
Yeah. Okay. But
And I thank you for supporting me a little bit there. Um, I have been in this town, my restaurant started in nineteen eighty with soup de jour. We have known we have known that we've had a bad water problem since then and probably before. Why haven't we saved for it? Why did we need new paving and new sidewalks down Hard Avenue and Belgian Block? Which I know is expensive. My brother-in-law's in construction, he said it's eight bucks a block. I don't know what you guys paid for, what we paid for it, but why hasn't this been saved for?
Well, uh, two things.
Saving from my desk. Why don't we as a whole? That doesn't make sense.
Yep, thank you. Um, one, I'll, I'll, I'll start. Are what we pay for water now, having not saved, uh, or, or however you'd like to refer to it, is higher than what our neighbors pay or pay these folks here? Ha, hold, if, if I, I'd love to answer your question. Uh, we'll, we'll allow you to ask them. I'll just ask that, when you ask one, that you let us try to, to answer.
I've got three minutes, and that's probably up already, so you gotta make it
Now, if you remember, we're not okay, I appreciate it. As I said before, we're not actually counting the clock when you're getting an answer, and we'll continue to do that. Uh, but I'll just, again, please allow us to, to answer the questions. So, uh, let's talk about the Belgian Block, uh, something that came with a grant. It ended up actually being less money than the concrete, our pri Yes.
We ripped up my sidewalk, which I hadn't paid for years ago, and you guys all said, you have to pay for your own sidewalk, and you have to replace it. I was, that was the last borough meeting I was at.
Yep. We'll continue We'll continue to welcome to meetings. Um, we'll, we'll do our best to answer your questions. I'm struggling.
Wasteful, is what I'm saying. Really wasteful.
Are we gonna be able to answer the question or not?
I'm answering.
Well, no, we're trying, and you keep interrupting us. So if you want an answer to the first question, which is about saving and all this, okay, first thing we have to tell you. The borough, the municipal finances and the borough utility are two separate financial entities, okay? We cannot use tax money to subsidize the water system. It's not permitted. The water system has to exist based on revenues that it raises through rates. And we are required to be what's called self-liquidating, which means we have to bring in as much money each year as we spend. The way we pay for capital improvements is we borrow for it. We don't save for it. If we were bringing in so much money that we were able to put away money, actually have a surplus, that would have been wonderful. We haven't. We've been living so close to the bone for so long, we haven't been able, you're shaking your head. I'm telling you what it costs. When we had to raise rates in twenty-twenty-four by on some of our businesses as much as fifty percent, that was because we had unanticipated costs the year before on the order of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. From, one of them was a leak that was completely outside of our control on private property. And we didn't have a surplus, because we've been trying to keep our rates low, frankly, too low, so we didn't have any extra money to deal with those kinds of contingencies. Expensive public projects, capital projects like this, are funded through borrowing, just like you would borrow to finance your house. You, you don't put a new roof on your house from something you happen to piggybank. You generally have, you know, and so, you know, if we were saving, oh, let me put it to you this way. If we were saving money, as you say, over time for all these things, we would have been charging you more
No, I don't, I spent the money, because we didn't need it. We needed to be repaved, sure, it was bumpy.
But paving projects
We didn't need all the rest.
Are not related to the water system finances, what I'm trying to explain to you. They're not. Um, I'll also tell you that
It's connected to a budget surplus. I've had to deal with budgets all my professional career.
You cannot transfer money from the municipal budget to the water utility. It is a separate utility. It operates fiscally. Uh, Brian, help me.
And, and we were blessed to receive a grant for the Hart Avenue project that could only, from the Department of Transportation, that could only be used for paving and curbing.
Right.
Hey, three streets with that, Paul.
And if you wanted to cash fund a project, a hundred and twenty thousand, uh, as the example, that would be a fifteen percent rate increase to pay for that. It's just the, it goes back to the economies of scale, the number of users. There's not the, the cost, the rate base, to spread the cost around on an annual basis like that, which is why, you know, we take advantage of the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank financing and other financing mechanisms, try to smooth out those rate increases. try to smooth out those rate increases, you know, as David mentioned, just the size of the budget and the cost of these projects. It's just not practical to finance or save or put enough money away on an annual basis without significantly higher rate increases. And then we've already kind of established the rates are already to the tune of twenty to thirty percent higher than everyone else is to begin with. So the rates will just, it would just be even, even.
So what's gonna happen with sewer rates? Are they gonna go up?
No, sewer has nothing to do with this proposed sale. The sewer service.
I'm just curious.
Again, may I finish? May I finish answering your question, please?
Say my question?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Please, so people can hear you online, if you could come back up to the podium and ask your question.
What's gonna happen with sewer rates? Because somebody might come along and say, our sewer, our sewer processing plant, Stony Brook, is not big enough. Then we're gonna have more on that.
Okay, good question. So, so our relationship with the Sewer Authority is where each member municipality, ourselves, Pennington, the Windsors, Princeton, pay a percentage based on the flow. So actually recently, when the plant in Pennington was expanded and increased, we actually got a small surcharge of that. We might not have noticed it, but we did, and we paid for a piece of that. If there were to be a time when our plant would be expanded, the Sewer Authority would pay for that. We would continue to pay a piece of that based on our percentage. We would kind of make out on that one where we would get a lot of benefit and only pay essentially the same percentage, just kind of like, I would say, Pennington probably did pretty well generally by not paying much more, but having their plant expanded. I'll let David talk a little bit more about sewer. Our, what we do in sewer is to maintain our pipes and then pay Stony Brook, our Sewer Authority, for the flow that comes out of the borough in, on a per gallon basis into the plant. So one of the things that David was actually talking about, one of the perhaps interesting kind of side benefits of having more money for the town is that it is something that we should be investing in more. We have what's called INI, but infiltration of stormwater into our pipes. And what that means is that it's like reverse leaky pipes, and that goes to the plant we pay to treat kind of clean stormwater. There's costs to that, both to us in paying for sewer that doesn't be treated because it's clean water, and for us to fix up the pipes and investigate. We could do that by increasing sewer rates further or with other sources of money. One of the things that David suggested our community could consider, if this were moved forward, and we have that white part of the graph of avoided extra costs for not having municipal debt, is would we like to spend more money on fixing up our sewer system? Would we like to look at our parks? Which things would we like to do without taxing more? That's what's represented by that white piece of the bar that we're talking about, and why we thought it was important to talk about the rates, which, again, our experts think will decrease, but I'm not saying that there's not lots of ways to look at that. And the difference between the orange and the pink, which we predict will be the savings that we have, might be different. Five percent, I heard six percent, that changes that gap by an amount. But even if it closed that gap completely, we'd still be talking about the blue part that's avoided, nearly $1 million a year that could go to things like sewer, without us having to increase your sewer rates or change or raise taxes to do it.
Can I take you back on that?
Please.
So I do work in a number of towns across the state, and unfortunately, as we all know, taxes go up. You know, whether they say are the two certain things, death and taxes, right? So we know taxes are gonna go up, unfortunately, rates across the state, it's, there's pressure on everything to go up, right? But putting aside the rates for a second, as Mayor mentioned, the 6.4 million purchase price and the ability to pay off your debt and save a million dollars from the general fund budget, you know, really something like this is the only mechanism to achieve something like that. You know, no one else is just gonna say magically, you know, here's a ton of money out of nowhere, pay off all your debt. So that, you know, in my experience, something like this is really the only mechanism to achieve such a dramatic amount of savings, and a million dollars per year bar exceeds the rate savings, really, at the end of the day. I mean, that, that's really the, the main benefit to the taxpayers and to the community is that white bar and the freeing up of those funds for other priorities in lieu of, you know, just, just everything just constantly going up, right? So, you know, I think that's the one opportunity to achieve something like that and, and, you know, offer tax stabilization, other capital projects, other services, what have you.
And just really quickly on that issue of the INI, I mean, even if you weren't talking about putting a lot of financing into it, during the drought that we had last year, it provided an opportunity for the sewer plant. They track how the flow that goes in a plant varies when it rains. And the difference between how it flows during a drought and how it flows during rainy seasons is your INI, right? That's the water that's not supposed to be getting in there. So they had, we had a particularly dry year last year, as you know, and there was a series of several months with almost no rain. And they were able to see just how much of the total flow from the borough is accounted for by an INI. And I think it was more than we ever thought it was. The thing about it is, if you spend some money on repairing your sewer collection system to deal with the INI, you generally recover that money by the money that you're not spending on feeds to the facility. So it's usually an investment that pays for itself. And that's one of the reasons why it's worth doing. Sorry, more than you ever wanted to know about sewer, but it is very important because, and also, as Ryan pointed out, the Stony Brook Sewers Authority is actually, it's wonderful because we are one of, what, six member municipalities? I can't remember, but you've got Princeton, West Windsor, et cetera. Much bigger, lots more flow. Our proportion of the debt service is very small because our contribution, so to all the flow for all the members is very small. They're making a $22 million plant upgrade right now, and I think we're gonna see a very small fraction of it, so anyway.
Thank you. I'll still thank her, I don't appreciate her to be thanked anymore, but anyway, sorry. Next question.
Hi, I'm David Baum, Taylor Terrace. I think Sheri, someone said early on, there's pros and cons to any path that we choose here. And then, you know, David's really detailed presentation talked a lot about a lot of rent costs and the differences. Just now in the presentation, I'm talking about a lot of opportunity costs. If the outcome of the referendum were, we know. From the council and the water board, what are some of the cons? I mean, what are potential risks and concerns that you have about a yes outcome?
I'll say for me, it's a short list. I started looking at this, you know, two years ago, thinking that if we came, brought to the community a solution that would just address, you know, essentially give the system away and address in some way the rising water costs, I thought we have something to be proud of. And to the earlier question about why would someone want to buy this, it's perplexing because I, I do, you know, I understand now, having lived with this for two years, how they are successful and make money while charging us less. And, but I wouldn't have thought that then. So to have that other blue benefit on top of the rates, I'm surprised. We talk a lot about control. Ultimately now, we as a community set the rates, right? So whether you elect us, we have some say. But I quickly realized, you know, when becoming mayor, that that kind of control is almost non-existent. As a, what's called a self-liquidating utility, our only option is to take the costs that we have and divide them amongst ourselves. And, you know, some of the first meetings I had to preside over was on changing our rates. And, you know, if you were to tell me, well, that's, you know, control that I get to wield in creating ordinance, I would say that I was, never felt more helpless or without control in anything because we had a series of costs and the only option was to divide them amongst ourselves. I, when you look at what people expect from a system, it's service. It is the actual physical water that you get. For the most part, the water that we'll be getting is actually what we've been using for a couple of years, so there's not a big change there. I was concerned with our staff. We have the most amazing people that work for us. And, I mean, all of us, including our water system director. He's been technically splitting his time between water and sewer and also other public works duties. He'll get to stay and focus all on sewer or other roles. So I was initially concerned, you know, that we, I don't know, would lose a great person. But the reality is that we need two of them, and by letting him do all sewer work, we will kind of maintain that. I'll let anyone else chime in, but I had focused on the affordability and.
You guys finished, plenty of assets today, like you don't think there's anything potentially negative about it?
I have something to say. So I think a looming con in people's minds is that we are relinquishing this asset that the town owns. I think that is a feeling that people have. And I had that feeling when I first started looking at this because it feels like giving away part of the borough. I think, so that could stand alone, feel like a con. I think an asset is only an asset if it has value. And right now, the value of this asset from where I'm sitting is in selling it and having someone else fix it, run it, maintain it and pay us for it. We, we don't have any business really trying to run a water system anymore. We're not, we're not that good at it. We don't have enough money to do it. So you can separate those two things. Just getting rid of something feels bad, but extracting the value of that asset in this way is what largely led us to believe that selling makes the most sense.
I just want to add, so, you know, there are a number of publicly owned water systems that have been sold or considering selling, whose rates are actually lower than some of the large publicly regulated utilities. That's not the case here, and that's not realistically going to be the case for us. And, you know, I've been involved in this for twenty-seven years, and I do a lot of the regulatory support as a volunteer, which otherwise we would be paying engineers to do. That's not incorporated into that estimate, I don't think. It's becoming more complicated by the day. The rules become more complex. The regulatory burdens are more extensive. The laboratory analytical costs, I mean, we had, I'll give you an example. We had a situation where we had a very brief spike in the chlorine level at this one point where the water comes into the system. I think it was just like one day, oh, the chlorine level is higher than normal. And the department said, oh, you know, it's not a violation, you know, but you have to do an operational analysis to explain why this happened. And here's a link to an EPA federal handbook that's a hundred and fifty pages long on how you do the operational analysis. I mean, the answer is, you know, they probably should have taken the sample after they'd cleared this, you know, mixing area first and gotten a fresh sample. But I mean, this is the kind of stuff that we got hit with constantly, just on the regulatory and operational front. Those things are all within the grasp of larger companies that have the resources, that have engineers on staff, that have regulatory people on staff. If you're a small town trying to do this, you know, your legal support, you're paying for it, your engineering support, I mean, it just, the burdens just multiply by the year. And I know this because I spent thirty years as a consulting geologist dealing with these kinds of, not necessarily water systems, but other, and on the cons, the con that I used to worry about, that a lot of people worried about, was you surrender control, the rates could go up, right? I can't tell you that there's no way that New Jersey American rates could ever reach ours, but based on all the analysis that we've done, I just don't see evidence of it. You know, if you, I don't know if you went to our last presentation, but we did a fifteen-year look back, and our rates were higher for almost every user, and we're going up three times faster than New Jersey Americans' rates during that period. And I don't see any evidence to suggest that that would change. We are already, we have a higher rate than them now. And, and again, you know, you can argue over whether you think five percent is the correct trend, or, you know, again, I've qualified this in a million ways. But certainly in the foreseeable future, in the next few decades, I do not see a trend of their rates going up at a rate that they are going to intersect ours. So, and if you'd asked me this question three years ago, I would have, like many people, just assumed, well, of course, they're a per-profit entity, the rates are gonna go through the roof, that's what people would always say. And, you know, one of the things that we did when we put out the request for proposal for bidders, we had three different bids, by the way, not just New Jersey American. We asked that they give us their tariffs going back fifteen years. I wanted to see a fifteen-year history of how their rates had changed. That was nine hundred pages of documents. So we sat down, we put all the rates, every single surcharge, everything into an Excel sheet and did the analysis that we presented at the last outreach thing that we had. We can't guarantee anything, but I think we have done pretty thorough due diligence on this subject. And at least as thorough as our team is capable of. And, you know, nobody can predict the future with any certainty. But it's not just about rates. It's about the resources that we have to put into, even the non-financial resources that we have to put into keeping this little water system going in a world that just doesn't favor water systems that operate in this scale. New Jersey American has over seven hundred and fifty times as many customers as we do. Think about that as a ratio when you're spreading out operational costs. That's a huge advantage. They are a per-profit corporation, but they are also a publicly regulated utility. They're not a venture capital firm that can just charge whatever they want. They are regulated by the Board of Public Utilities. They have to justify every single change down to the penny. They have to justify every request. If you don't believe it, go on to the BPU website and download some of these foundation filings and base rate case filings. It'll take a few hours looking at them, but it will give you an idea of the level of scrutiny and the level of rigor. Nothing is guaranteed. But from my perspective, the resources that we are having to expend on propping up this little system aren't worth it. You know, thirty years ago, all you had to do is get water out of the ground, make sure that it didn't have a fecal coliform problem, meter it and distribute it to people's taps. That's about chlorinate it. That's about all you had to do. This is not the same world. And it gets more complicated and more expensive and more challenging by the day, and we just don't have the resources to do it. And New Jersey American does. And I think that has implications for cost. It has implications for reliability. It has implications for resiliency. I mean, if we have, if there's another change in a, in a water treatment standard, not only do we have to put in treatment equipment, we have to basically bump out both buildings and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars actually creating a housing for that equipment. I mean, these are enormous costs.
Positive to see in the terms you used to have. I see there's a lot more questions.
Hi, everyone. Ethan Unik, I'm on foot place. So I want to preface this by just sort of making a public comment. You know, I'm on, sort of, I'm in the restaurant industry, and I know that like there's a huge cost that's being borne right now by restaurants. And I, to me, those graphs look like a bloodbath to me, so I really have a great deal of concern for, for restaurants in the local economy if, you know, if the referendum goes to a no. So I feel like some of the arguments opposing the sale sort of hinge on this idea that there's some unexplored funding that hasn't been explored, and it always seems very nonspecific, like it reminds me of this whole like sort of anger, denial, bargaining, acceptance, like we're in that denial stage. So, yeah, I just wanted to give you guys the opportunity to sort of clear up that myth of like that, you know, there hasn't been this, you know, full-on effort that you guys have been putting forth to try to, you know, find every way to, to get funding, to, you know, somehow remedy the situation and that sort of thing.
But first I'll say, I mean, we're not gonna stop anyone from asking questions like that, you know. I, look, I appreciate the question. We're gonna try to restrict things to two questions. I think we could find a question in there. And ultimately, it's a lot of work. And ultimately, it's a lot of work, you know. And we look, we have a meeting coming up with I Bank again in a couple of weeks. I frustratingly have been tracking a grant that befuddingly the Treasury Department keeps suggesting, even though we've unfortunately don't qualify. There are lots of different parameters to many of these grant opportunities. A lot of them are income and wealth-based. I'm generally pleased, for many reasons, that we are a community of means, that, in some ways, I mean, I'm, I feel lucky in that way as a recipient of federal or state funds, though that does not help us. And so USGA and many of these items, we don't qualify for many of the programs that we'd like to or that some of our neighboring communities do. The next piece that is challenging is a lot of them are broken down by size of system. Apparently, whether it's a policy reason or what, I don't know, but to focus on, say, 10,000 or literally 10,000 users and up, I don't, I mean, look, I think some of it is because they'd like the money to go to, say, to Trenton or to Newark or a big place, whether it's a lot of bang for the buck, or, again, another way of looking at the income disparity, in which, you know, from a policy perspective, I don't, I can't necessarily fault Trenton or Washington for prioritizing some communities over us. That doesn't mean we're not going to look at all of them and try, or ask our legislators or congressional representatives for the funding. But the reality is that despite that work, we baked in some assumptions that we would get some. I wish I would be telling you that the prospects of that, I believed, were as rosy even as those projections. I, we wanted to present numbers that were, we thought, fair and to make, we think, conservative assumptions that, look, we could maybe get the 50% principal forgiveness, for example, or something in between there. But the reality is, our last meeting with I Bank, you know, they suggested, well, let's circle back after they talked to the legislature about changing the programs. You know, there, they, there wasn't a lot for us for the type of we need. It doesn't mean we would not and aren't continuing to look. Look, we have a great track record with DOT for road grants, and I think our administration for that. Whether it's just road is wealth agnostic, I'm not quite sure.
Well, I think that actually comes through the state, right, the state funds that through their infrastructure trust, right?
They do, but why? But why, look, we're lucky to be eligible for some things, in some categories, for water. We've spent a lot of time looking, and we'll continue. This is not a one-time or a short part of our efforts, and obviously, or maybe it's not obvious, but should our community decide to keep the system, we will continue to do that. Our expectations are not particularly high that we will get a lot of free money. We've, we think, made pretty conservative estimates about what we would get in showing the modeling. But from my perspective, and this is as one of the people asking, you know, the 15th District and our congressional representatives for funding, that it's, I wish I had a different answer than it was here.
Very quickly, very quickly, an example, okay, this is a grant that Ryan alluded to. So we got an announcement from Senator Cory Booker's office about some federal grant opportunities, and it was one related to resiliency for water systems, and we thought, oh, wonderful, you know, we could use a generator at well number four, that's about $50,000. So I looked at the announcement, we looked at the announcement, and it said $9.9 million available, $9.95 million available. I thought, was that for New Jersey? No, actually, it's for the 48 states. That's the total funding for that particular thing, for resiliency, and it's only mid and large water systems, not small water systems. Again, I don't know why. We know there's a number that we're aware of through some litigation we were involved with. I think there are approximately 10,000 publicly owned water systems in the United States. So nine and a half million entire United States. I'm sorry to be cynical, but it seems like they're missing some zeros. I'm just saying, if that is a reflection of the availability of grants coming from Washington today for water, and it's just only one example, it's grim. But we will keep looking. Again, we constantly look at these announcements. We're looking at any opportunity we can. The second thing is, there are lots of low-interest loans out there. The opportunities for principal forgiveness are relatively slim, partly because we don't meet the income criteria. So the median household income in Hopewell Borough is approximately 40% higher than the median household income of the state of New Jersey. I think I mentioned that in one of my slides. It makes perfect sense for granting agencies for federal agencies to prioritize that money to communities in need that are lower-income communities, especially when some of them have worse infrastructure problems than we do and may actually have real public health problems. That is exactly what they should be doing. But the fact is, we are just not going to meet those criteria, and we, again, we keep looking, but, you know.
Can I say one thing about shared services? I get asked about that a lot, and it isn't that we haven't looked into that, but that doesn't, that doesn't apply to the huge infrastructure costs that we need. So I don't even think we put it in because it doesn't change the needle at all. It would, it doesn't put a dent in those huge numbers that we're talking about.
Yeah, one of my first graphs, it's that red line. A shared service would change below that red line marginally at best. It's really that service on top that, as I mentioned, that was driving the release.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. My name's Maryne Labos, and I was hoping you could help me understand because I'm not an attorney and I don't deal in contracts that involve selling, or, you know. But is it typical for contracts to allow real estate purchases by the purchaser for a dollar per parcel?
So ultimately, so I'm not the borough's attorney. I happen to be a real estate attorney. The contract is an overall bucket of everything that's being purchased. There are some pieces of the purchase, the land, perhaps where the well is, for example, that are included in that $6.4 million purchase price, but need to be transferred separately as a different type of transaction. There will be a deed likely, if they choose to take the well, and they ultimately may not, we may, they may decide that we keep that land. If they do, we would give them a deed for a dollar. It wouldn't actually be deducted from the $6.4 million. It's just that there needs to be a dollar amount put on that document when it's filed with the county clerk, and they really put the value on the overall purchase, rather than if they don't, say, take the land under, you know, around, say, well number six, that, you know, we wouldn't be refunding them money or something like that. It's meant to be a nominal amount to just show that it will be transferred.
This is more for New Jersey American Water. How have recent electric rate increases to your operating costs? Sorry, I'm a low talker. I'm sorry. Sorry. For New Jersey American Water, how have recent electric rates impacted your operating costs? And do you see that driving your next, well, I guess, contribute to your next rate case?
So maybe I'll let you speak to the rate case component, but as I mentioned earlier, it does take a lot of energy to move water, so it has increased our operating costs. We recover operating costs on a one-to-one basis, so I don't know if you guys want to speak to how we incorporate operating costs in the rate case.
Sure. I mean, it is a component of the rate case. You know, expenses, return on equity on our investment, these are all components, but operating expenses, dollar-for-dollar, are a component. So as electricity costs go up, our rate case request would have to go up.
My next two things are maybe not so much cons, but they certainly would be differences for the borough if we were to sell. For instance, you know, right now, we entrust the borough and the consultants that I work with, with our PII, our personally identifiable information. But going forward, that information will be with New Jersey American Water, who has cybersecurity breach that was newsworthy in 2024. Can you please address how you're going to protect our PII?
I think we, well, transparency, I don't think we have a person here this evening that can fully address our IT technology security. So if we could get back to you with that answer.
If I could, I think that's an excellent question, and I'm going to challenge our team as well. I'd be very careful what I'm saying here, but, you know, small towns do have similar struggles. And, you know, I question whether, you know, these materials for our current bills, whether that's even a public record or not. I don't know that it is or isn't, but I think it's an excellent question and one that I'm going to challenge our team to look into a little bit as well from our side, and also make sure that we're.
Handling our personal, I got a hold of identifiable information, but I would argue that New Jersey American Water makes a much more attractive target than Hopewell Borough for a cyber attack. Actually, can I make a point on that? Actually, we are seeing that especially small rural water systems are extremely attractive targets for security breaches, terrorism targets.
Because we're softer, easier.
Lee, if, with apologies to those online, everyone might have just heard a hoot. That is, that is our camera rebooting. I think people online heard what was said, but let's just give it a second before your follow-up question to make sure it's back on, online. And with apologies to those online looking just at me, I assure you, it will transition to a much more pleasant view in a second, I hope. I'm actually not quite sure why it's not. So if anyone online could give me the, push the raise hand button, just if you know that you can actually hear what's happening in the room at the moment while we, all right, I hear the raised hand. I'll take that as that you can hear it. With apologies, or we'll get the video freed back on. Thank you so much. And I'm going to manually angle my, well, let's continue, and again, apologies to those online. We'll get this rectified in a second.
So obviously, Hopewell Borough water, Broadway, the inner town boundaries, and water from New Jersey American Water, would be coming from all sorts of that, we're looking at it from, I believe, around the Millstone, Maritton River basin, which is noted for some pretty epic floods, and thank you for that picture, whoever had that up there, showing the enormous flooded, the enormous floodway, as well as the small pocket of blue that was miraculously saved by your infrastructure improvements. If the flood wall, I mean, this is very hypothetical, but, I mean, we are getting heavier and heavier rains as systems stall out. If that flood wall were to fail at one of your treatment plants, how would that impact all of your customers? Would you still be able to supply water from your remaining treatment plants?
So two things about that subject. One, where earlier we referenced how close it came to going, I forget what year it was, which flood, you know, kind of all together. We actually did a second project to raise that wall again, and we feel like we have, we're at the 500-year flood point now. I guess you could challenge that, too, but second part of that is, what kind of resiliency, what kind of redundancy do we have in the system? We do have a second water treatment, water treatment plant called the Canal Road Water Treatment Plant, which is up on the hill on the other side of the river in Franklin Township, and that could sustain service to our service area, not without some restrictions, though, to be clear. And, you know, if there's two plants, if we lost, if we somehow lost one, the other could keep basic services going, but we would have to go under restriction.
Okay, thank you for that. And then one more thing, and we did experience this back in 2023. I believe you had a water main break on 202, 206, which, since there, we are on the edge of your territory, so there's really only one water main, I think, coming to Hopewell Borough. So if there's a direct interruption between us and where we start interconnecting to the rest of your pipes, we are out until you make that repair.
Correct. At this point in time, we have one feed in, we have other potential routes that we are looking at, will look as, as we, you know, we decide on this partnership to have redundant feed.
Okay. Then that would just be for Hopewell Borough's redundant feed or for potential expansion in residential development in the area?
No, it would only be, it would be for this borough, and then residential is, residential construction is at the, under the purview of local planning and zoning boards.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gigi Armstrong, East Prospect Street. Thank you for all the information you've both been sharing. I have two questions, but David, just a few minutes ago, you said something that disturbed me, and I want to maybe get your clarification. You, it sounded like what you were saying was that the Borough of Hopewell does not have the capacity to really handle our water, but New Jersey American Water does. And that made me think of one of my questions, which was hypothetically, if we didn't have bidders like New Jersey American Water or others, are you saying that we would literally be up shit's creep without a paddle, that we can't handle this?
No, I'm not saying we can't handle it. I'm just saying it's becoming increasingly difficult, and it's consuming more and more resources to do it. There's always a way to handle it, but there's always a price, right? So, I mean, we have access to engineers. We actually have two different engineering firms that we work with, one that has specific water engineering expertise. We have access to legal services for regulatory oversight, all that stuff. It can all be done. It's just, I was thinking, I was not thinking, but casting this more in terms of, you know, the resources that we have to expend as a community relative to what the resources that we need to devote to other things. It's really, it's always possible. I mean, there's no, and, you know, we do the best we can. But, well, one of the things that we actually built into our projections of our budget was to have additional staff for the water department, because right now, we have one person who's basically doing, as you know, it's Wonder Gold, doing the fieldwork, but he's also responsible for submitting the laboratory results, all these other regulatory things. So we, and now we actually have an outside consultant who's helping with some of that. But it's just, no, you can always find the resources to do it. It's, to me, it's more of a question of, are those resources being allocated well when we have such a small economy of scale? That's really what it's about. So don't be alarmed. It's not as if we're not going to be delivering safe water. It's just, it's just becoming more expensive and challenging and infuriating to do.
I understand. So you talked a lot about the white bars in the graph here that with New Jersey American Water purchasing, we would have money freed up for other things that need attention as well. But that leads me to another question. How is the water situation, our water situation now, connected to land development projects like the Project 57? And is there a direct connection then?
Well, let me address it this way. We have sufficient capacity, for example, for Hopewell 57. We actually have, if we brought that second well online, we would have substantial additional capacity. So there's no shortage of water. We would also always keep the interconnection with New Jersey American as a backup supply. But, because I think that's just a prudent thing to do, to have, you know, you have an option, all you have to do is switch it on. It's like, oh, well, you literally just turn a switch. But, I mean, interestingly enough, our water allocation permit that we have, I don't think we're even pumping half of what's totally permitted. I mean, if we wanted to, if we suddenly grew, I'm not suggesting that we do, please, no, but we could produce more water here if we needed to. But with those two wells fully operational and an interconnection in addition as a backup, I don't foresee any supply issues, at least within the relevant development that we would, I think, want in the borough.
Okay. So one project isn't dependent on another?
No.
Okay.
No.
Another quick question, because I've been living in the borough for 15 years, and I don't remember a boil water advisory, but before I lived here, I lived in Montgomery Township where we had private water. It was New Jersey American, and we did have boil water advisories. So I would, I don't know if you can address this or not, but how should we be expecting more boil water dates when we haven't been having them so far?
You shouldn't expect it, but it can happen. To the councilman's point, regulations got stricter and stricter. If we lose complete pressure at any point in the system, we're required by regulation to put a boil, a boil order advisory out. So you're seeing that happen, you're probably hearing about it in certain localized areas of our system once in a while. Doesn't happen a lot, but it can happen at times. If we were, it happens usually in a smaller, what we call zone, water zone. This would be part of a larger zone, so not as likely to happen. But in a smaller zone, you can, if you completely lose pressure, you have to do that to ensure the safety of the water. And we usually get it back online within hours, but it's something we have to do.
Okay, so, but what I was experiencing in Montgomery Township was Hurricane Floyd and things like that, where I don't think Hopewell, Little Hopewell Borough was not affected, but because we had this centralization of water, suddenly we had boiled water.
That, and that's a fair point. In a real significant situation, if you had a isolated system that was just on. That, and that's a fair point. In a, in a real significant situation, if you had a isolated system that was just on groundwater and wasn't affected by a bigger issue, you might not have one. But in a bigger system, you may be pulled into it. It could happen.
During Floyd, I'll just tell you, we literally came this close to having one and that's because. We have these cisterns up at Burton Avenue that had vents on the side of them and the water was rushing down from the cemetery. I mean, it was not a stream, it was just. Sheep flow off the side and it got so high that it threatened to go in the vents into the cisterns, in which case you would have had surface water. So Dave Myslick was there, he isolated the cisterns and shut them off. I mean, there was literally another 10 minutes and we would have had one. So everybody was having that. Probably was 12 inches of water. We had 12 hours. So, but yes, it was, it was a close one.
Okay. So I'm going to wrap up my questions by just saying one concern is that I've been hearing more on the news that when, that. We may be coming as a country more and more vulnerable to outside attack to a US water system. That's what I've been hearing. So when I start to think about centralization of water, I get more concerned of that risk.
Yes.
I think that's, that's, that's a very good point. I, I feel like this one I want to take back to our team because there are. Different scales of challenges for municipal government, but, but similar risks. And we may not be as popular as a target, but it's an area where I believe that we as a borough, forgetting the water part of it. Need to invest more likely in, I, we do hear. Say stories of other towns with, you know, crypto locker things and I, we look and, and again, credit to our immediate past administrator for implementing some additional tech. Security. Programs here, but you know, we've gone from a town where I honestly walked upstairs and at times found computers logged in and. You know, there's a lot of positive change in the borough there, but it's another area where we don't have a lot of resources for security. Some of our security is through obscurity, I suppose. An area where, I just, I'm a reminder to our team, again, water aside, that we need to make sure that we're investing in because, you know, I. Like I, we're very special. I don't know that we'll be a big target internationally, but it's, we might be an easy target.
Thank you.
And before you answer your question, if you don't mind, if I could ask a follow up question, I, you asked a very excellent question about the boil water stuff and maybe I just. I'm confused a little bit, but for the past 10, 15 years, we've been purchasing, you know, 50.
Just so, and boy, those pressure drops you're talking about could happen for a number of reasons, right? I mean, it's not necessarily, oh, you've got cross contamination system, but I mean, if a contractor busts a main, right? Somebody working and they didn't do. Yes, they didn't pay attention to your markup, then you've got, I mean, there are those things that can happen, right? That can trigger it.
And typically, a normal, normal water main break won't trigger a boil water because it's still flowing.
Right.
And then you just isolate that section and you move on.
Right.
In some situations where you might have heard us go to a boil water, it's because we lost the entire tank.
I see.
And the whole system drained out.
Right.
So.
So then, but, but in other words, as long as you have positive pressure, even if there's a break, the water's going out, you don't have backflow coming in.
And actually, I was able to find an email history on boil water advisors that we had pulled up earlier. So again, Carmen is a senior director of our central region. So that's the region that would serve. Hopeful Borough should the referendum pass. So over the past, since 2024, the region, there have been. Seven boil water advisories issued over since 2020 for this region.
And that's the entire.
Central operating. Central operating.
So that's a big chunk in Jersey, yeah.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Paul Maxwell on Broad Street, so two questions, one concrete, one little more conceptual. Just for sake of comparing apples to apples, during the capital prediction, capital expenditure fiction. I think it was mentioned correctly, if I'm wrong here, that if the. New Jersey American was saying that they would replace the, the, not only the lead goos next, but also the service lines into houses. I used to live in Hamilton. And they, they sent me an estimated bill replacing the service lines in my house. It's a very large sum of money and I moved out of Hamilton when I got that there. Anyways, so it was not, it's not a small amount of money, as I recall. If we were to do that ourselves, are we just replacing the lead goos next? Or are we also replacing the lines into the houses?
Well, that's a very good question. So, so here's how it works. So. The, the law requires replacement of all quote lead service lines. That includes galvanized steel lines that probably don't have any lead in them. It's the way they define their law. So there's the publicly owned part, which is everything from the main up to the curb stop. And then there's the privately, the customer owned part from the curb stop to the house.
Yeah.
The law requires that all of that be replaced if it's either galvanized or it has actual lead components. So on the public side, we have these lead goos next that were, and actually, I would say 90% of our connections, the lead goos next were already taken out. Because every time we did a road project, we would take them out. Almost all but one are underneath Broad Street, which is a county road. But we're responsible for them. There are currently 90. Customer owned galvanized service lines in the borough. I know this because we just submitted our annual lead service line submitted to the state. Tell you, that's a thrill. And so. Well, I, I don't know, but I mean, we, I have the whole database, but, but the, so. The way that would work, because we are actually responsible for submitting a lead service line replacement and identification plan to the DEP, which we just, it was just updated every year. And the way that would work is for the, the publicly owned part, that cost is shared by all of our rate payers. For the customer owned lines, there's two options. The customer could replace it at their expense and typically. That's around $5,000 or $6,000, depends on the length of the line and so on. But I mean, I know my neighbor just did one a couple of years ago. I think it was $5,000. Longer if it's, if it's a really long one. And the other option is if, if the customer doesn't want to do it, and by the way, it has to happen before July 22nd of 2031. And we're not going to knock on your door today and say, you've got to do it right away, but. We have to have sort of a phasing plan through town or we have to take care of a certain number and we have to report it every year. Our plan would say that if the customer didn't want to do it within the timeframe that we required, the borough would do it. We would hire a contractor. We would execute an access agreement with the homeowner. Do all that, which we would probably do, you know, 20 of these a year. And then the idea would be that we would assess the homeowner for the cost, but spread it out over 10 years. So instead of taking a hit for the $5,000 or $6,000, you're paying $500 or $600 a year for that 10 years. The other option is we would do it and we would spread the cost across all the rate payers. The dilemma is there are a whole bunch of people in town that have already replaced their lines at their cost. And so now we're asking them to pay for it again. There's no perfect answer to this. And then, but we also, if we have a situation where somebody just wasn't able to afford it, we would. Find a way to work it out and share that cost.
So how, how is that reflected in the, the number of the capital expenditures?
So the capital expenditures that we have, the lines are captured in two different places. We have a line item in there. For a little over half a million dollars for doing all the customer owned lines, assuming that, that, you know, they don't get done by individual customers. And every year a few people do them. So it all depends on, you know, when we start, but we would have to really do this in earnest. In the next five years, we'd have to sort of meet our targets to get that done by, to by 2031. The publicly owned part, which is those lead goos next and so on, most of those are along Broad Street. So the Broad, the East Broad Street and West Broad Street main replacements, which are I think 4.8 million total baked into that. Is the cost of replacing the publicly owned section of those services and the curb stops. It's not just the mains, it's everything connected to it inside the right away. So that's how it's kind of broken down. Altogether, we estimated a while back that the total cost for the lead service lines. For the whole community, it's about 1.2 million, give or take. Might be a little less because it's more efficient to do it as part of the main replacements.
Just third case question for N J W, with the cost of those, the service lines into the house, is that. Being covered by, is that, you know, just going to the, it's a surcharge for the general rate payer or are we, would we be billed individually?
So I'm going to work with Jamie here on this answer. So as I mentioned, New Jersey American Water has, you know, per the state mandate, take, taken on replacing not only company owned service lines, but also. Facilitating and doing the work to replace our customer owned service lines, but I'll let Jamie speak to how we recover those costs.
So the chart that showed in the slides, our rates, that lead service line chart, that is the customer side. So that is shared amongst all of our customer base. There's, there are 600 custom, 600,000 customers. The company side is replaced also, and that runs through our disex surcharge and our base rates. So it's being, it's being spread across all of our customer base.
Thanks. Yeah. The other, that's a second question, a little more conceptual. So I've heard people talk about economies of scale. I get it conceptually where, you know. There's a reason why we, in the first place, someone in the 1900s with that reservoir up on the hills, because it's a lot more, but before that, everyone had a well in their backyard. I think that's because I found the old way and in my backyard will do some digging. And you, the kinds of scale meant that it was far more efficient than everyone having to dig and maintain the well, especially the pre regulatory era. It was the band together. We could save a lot of money and provide better quality service by having a borough water utility, you know, 125 years ago. So I get the concept and the same concept should scale up. And I struck while looking at the, the slides, which thanks for those, the slides. The contrast between our reservoir on the hill that's leaking and the line, and then the like seriously solar punk reservoir with the floating solar panels. And I don't think we're probably having capital expenditure to put in a lake on top of your hill and floating the solar panels. But I, it illustrated to me like the contrast between like what you can do when you have economies of scale, like, because I imagine that's actually cheaper per user. Than if every little township had a separate reservoir. But I don't know that for sure. I'd like to hear some more illustrations of how times is still actually like concretely function.
Oh, sure. So I just want to, want to go back to a point about, somebody asked, why are you here? Why are you interested in our system? And maybe I gave a Pollyanna answer that we want to help. Solve problems for communities, which is very true, but we are experts in water and wastewater service. We provide service to every one in three New Jerseyans. And to your point, we have resources and services available to customers that can result in better quality service at a cheaper price. So when a community that we're already supplementing their water supply puts out a bid and says, we need help, we want bids from regulated utilities to see who can help us solve our problems. Of course you're going to come to the table and provide a solution. So I just wanted to say that, and I think it goes to your question about economies of scale and what we are able to do for our customers when it comes to cost of pipe, cost of chemicals.
Best practices.
Fast practices, our labor, right? Our, our workforce and the skills that they have. Carmen, if you have one.
Sure. So I'll use a couple of examples. Well, number one, that reservoir, that cool reservoir with the floating panels, that's not finished drinking water. That's. Roll water right out of the rivers, being stored for, for treatment, just to be clear. So we know we're not putting a uncovered reservoir up on a hill. I think a couple, you know, when you have. Small water systems all over the place, they all have to have their own infrastructure, their own wells, or whether it may be a river or a source, they have to have their own tank. Each of those little systems has to have that. So when you have a large integrated system, you can have one large tank serving a larger area. So per se, when, if we were to be partnering with you. We may not reuse that reservoir on the hill because we have other reservoirs. That may be something we would look at. It's just one example. Other example, economies of scale or in purchasing power, I think you probably could get that, like we put. Miles and miles of pipe in everywhere, you know, across our system and we get very good unit costs on buying pipes. So that's a, a capital economy we, we get to enjoy. So yeah, it is true that as you consolidate things, you can get some scale, economy of scale there, but also. With an eye for resiliency and redundancy in case things fail.
Excellent. Just to add something quickly to that, I mentioned this before. So. The nature of our system is we are entirely dependent on groundwater, right? All the water comes from wells, but well singular right now, but in ideally two, if we, you know, put the treatment system in, keep it. The consequence of that is when there's a change in a treatment standard. We don't pump all our water to a central treatment plant. It has to be treated what we call plug of entry at the wellhead. So that's why we'd have a PFOS system, well number four. And another PFOS system, well number six. So you have the operational cost, you have the capital cost, all that. Each time there's a change in treatment requirements, you have to house that thing, you have to build it, you have to operate it. And that's why we took two of our wells. We abandoned them permanently. We sealed them because we couldn't afford to do the radio, treat for radionuclides. If you are a large system. Like New Jersey American and you have surface water supplies and you have a variety of sources, you have a level of flexibility that the borough doesn't have. I mean, the DEP, when they send you a notice that says, well, you're in violation of the MCL for PFOS, you have the following options. You can take the well offline and find an alternative source, which for us means. The interconnection, right? We don't have an alternative source and that's one of the things that makes it especially difficult. If we were in an area. And also some of the things that we've had problems with are naturally occurring in the aquifers that are generally not a problem with surface water. So. But that is the thing that keeps me up at night and always has, and what we've lived with for decades is every time there's a change. You may have to implement that at both wells. And so it's extremely inefficient and you don't have a lot of options. Other than, for example, purchasing water in bulk or from, from another provider.
If I just add one counter, I don't know that we're, I'm not going to say we're. Going to match them, but we, we do, we're members of purchasing cooperatives. We recently bought something for well number four. I forget what it was. And joined a new cooperative. We do have some additional avenues of purchasing, but we try. And we, we've gotten, we think, good pricing for some of the things. I don't know. I'm not going to claim that we can do as well. I don't know. But we, there are avenues for us there that we, we do through cooperative purchasing. Get into a bigger group and, and do pretty well. Those are not the, the big gaps, I think, in our, in our, our. Expenses. Another one though, that maybe flip side to that is because we're isolated physically, geographically from, you know, other areas. And are small, almost every project that we do requires us using an outside contractor. We're not going to be big enough to have full time. Crews to do water main replacements and things like that, which relies us on using private outside companies to do that. And there's, there's additional costs to that, that if we were like a New Brunswick or. Not gonna, sorry, a bigger city perhaps that had those house resources. You know, we, we wouldn't be dealing with the outside contractors there and it's one we've explored and would continue to, but it, because of geography, aren't the best candidates for. Shared services in ways that will save us a ton of money. It's ones that will, you know, incrementally perhaps on some larger projects, but we're, we're stuck with outside contractors for a lot of things too.
Makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, David Wallman. I'm a local. I have a conceptual question, just if we can step above sort of the day to day stuff. But oh, first let me preface it with, thank you all so much for incredible diligence. I've taken a dive into the rabbit hole to kind of feel the pain, see what you guys are doing and to learn a lot. This is super complex stuff. It's super complex. And I'm not saying by any means that I endorse what you're doing. I happen to be against privatization. With something that I think is justified, and I'll get into that perhaps in a minute or less than a minute. But my first question is. You know, we're up here, step away from the day to day stuff. I'd like an answer from each of you and it's probably not practicable to get one from. The remote other council members, so maybe we do that some other time, but from among the committee people. Just you three guys and, and perhaps you, but I don't know to the extent that you weigh in on that. Probably not. Let's keep it to the committee. The question, what are the most important guiding principles? That you take into account. To make a decision such as momentous as this. And I want to narrow the question down. You're only allowed to tell me one thing. Tell me the one value. Or the one guiding principle value. That is significantly driving your decision making process in this. that is significantly driving your decision-making process in this. I hope it doesn't sound stupid, but to me it's a really important question. Because this goes to the philosophy of us as constituents being properly served. Simply put.
So.
So I mean this, I mean this in a friendly way.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll start and give my colleagues a little time to catch their breath and think about this. Um, um, our role as elected officials, uh, is to help steward the resources of a community. Um, it comes with taxing power. Uh, at the moment, it comes with the ability to set water rates, though, as I said before, I personally feel like I have no control over that as an elected official. Um, or we're obligated to charge what our costs are. But ultimately, um, our role is to help determine what things our community needs, you know, what we should be spending on and how much those things will cost our community. Uh, we have a fixed amount of resources, uh, as, as a community to spend on, whether it be roads or hospitals or whatever it is we decided are important to our community. And the most important thing I see is making sure that the amounts that are paid uh, and the priorities of the community, uh, match in a way that is fair to not just, I'll say, the people, uh, here, uh, now, but in particularly when it comes to affordability, the people that, uh, I'm not gonna say that we've been failing. Uh, but the, uh, people, uh, who should be neighbors of ours, but perhaps cannot afford it. Um, so for me, it, it is affordability and resource stewardship is the number one piece, um, of in, in just about every decision.
Thank you. That's exactly the, that's the kind of answer I was looking for, but not the answer specifically, but you, you address.
Philosophically.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, that's great. Yeah.
Uh, I, look, it's a, uh, this is a night about having our outside experts available. I'll, I'll leave it to my colleagues what they'd like to say, um, uh, philosophically, uh, you know, whether it's their area of expertise.
This is a trap question.
I just, no, I don't believe it either. I just did.
Good answer too. And my, um, husband's sitting in the back there, so you can ask him how many late night conversations we've had about the responsibility that I feel to this town and people that live here. It's the whole reason I ran for council. I love it here. I have two young kids. We talk about our kids living in our house one day. And so it is this real, uh, responsibility to take care of something that I don't own, um, that, that I love. And it is really hard. It's really hard because I don't have a crystal wall. So, um, you know, my husband's a data guy. We run numbers all the time and try to think of like what, with what we do know, what's the best choice for the town now and for the future, which is like an impossible thing. Um, but the res, it's the responsibility that I feel to make that best choice. So when we looked at what the, the people that I hear from, who are like, I have to choose, am I gonna buy food or am I gonna pay for water if you raise my rates? The, the, the businesses that we have here, I worry a lot about their ability to, you know, to, to make it through that ten years. If, if we keep the system, I, I don't know, I don't know what our town would look like at the end of that ten years. So that responsibility to, to keep the town, what we love, which is the people who live here, the businesses that are here. I think that that is an unsustainable model. And it's one of those things. It's like, in order to stay the same, you have to change. And so it, it wasn't an easy decision, but my responsibility to, to maintain what I love about this town led me to, to in, endorse this course of action.
So, so let me just ask the question a little, not differently, but I, I wanna put words. I wanna say what I think I'm hearing so we can see if I'm even close. With, uh, with Ryan, it sounds like affordability was sort of the clear front runner in his analysis, not to simplify a very complicated response.
Um, sure.
Is it fair to say that affordability, cause remember I only wanted one value. And I know it's might not be a fair question, but I'm trying.
Uh, to the, uh, you know, agreeing with your premise that it is not a fair question. Um, I will say that affordability and my role in, in the stewarding, the scarce resources of our community to the priorities of our community. Um, and in doing as many things we can with that resources, um, knowing that we here have the power to take and to tax, uh, and that does not come lightly. So we, we could, we could buy everything in the world. Um, if we wanted and, and essentially impose that on everyone, um, but it's the obligation to, uh, marshal our scarce resources towards the things that are this community's priority. Um, and that's, that's the hardest thing. And that's, but that's what, that's what drives it for me.
So not to put words in your mouth, but I heard a little competition between legacy because you were worried about generations in the future and affordability. If I were to give you the unfair challenge to pick one over the other, do you have one you would pick?
Uh, I mean, I think they're tied together because, because my, my point is that.
Okay. So you're saying affordability in the long run.
I, I, I don't know if I can simplify it.
Okay, yeah.
It was, yes.
I, 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 I absolutely qualify it as an unfair question. I'm just, it's an exercise to give us a bit of an understanding of the deeper, not necessarily always articulated drivers that put you where you are when you vote. That's all. That's all. And it's not a trick question. It's not, I just, I just thought it was worth putting some oxygen on it. That's all. And David?
Um, so my answer is gonna be similar. Um, I might probably explain it a little differently, but I, I look at scarce resources available to a community with limited resources and a variety of different goals, needs, things that we try to do and foster to support the community, affordability being one. And the fundamental question underneath it is, to me, is given all that we know financially, in terms of what resources we have to put into continuing to operate the system, is continuing to operate the system and own it, the best use of those resources? Whether it's the financial resources, the capital that we can extract from it for other purposes, or the money that we have to put in to make it happen? Is that the best use of that asset, if you will, for both the current and the future needs of the community? And, and especially given just the struggles of literally being able to remain Hopewell Borough as Hopewell Borough. Um, and, and I'll, I'll add a little thing to it, which is just underscoring the same thing, but you know, people would ask me for years about the water system and, you know, they'd say, oh, we should never sell it, sell it. And I would say, you know, as long as we can provide safe, dependable water at a reasonable cost, even if it's a little bit more maybe than what it would cost for a public utility. There's some, there's value beyond money that's captured by a certain level of service that, you know, is mostly embodied by one person that we all know. But I, I'm just saying, I always in my gut, aside from the analysis and everything else, I always felt like there was an intangible value that would be worth preserving. But there, there would probably come a threshold one day where that was no longer valid. In other words, and it's hard to know exactly where that threshold is. That's really just another way of explaining what I just told you before. But, you know, it's balancing these values to the community and the value of keeping it and what we're getting from it. And what the, those resources are that we're devoting to it. Um, that I think is the underlying. I mean, I used to make the joke years ago when it was inconscionable, unconscionable to me that we would ever do anything to keep the system. I said, you'll have to pry the wellhouse keys from my cold dead hands. But, I know, okay, but you know, yeah. It's the transformation or the change. I remember a time not that long ago, sitting in a meeting with the D E P where they, where they proposed this E C S T C grant and said, we could actually come up with a funding package that would cover well number six and four. And Sky Morehouse and Paul Anzano and I were on that call. This is with about twenty people at D E P with the assistant commissioner, Pat Gardner, one of my heroes. And I remember at that moment thinking, maybe, maybe there's a way we can make this work. But once we really got through the full depth of the fiscal and engineering analysis that we subsequently did, that perception evaporated based on exactly the criteria that I'm telling you. So that's, that's a longer way to answer than you wanted, but yeah.
No, no, thank you. It's really, it's, it's good for us to hear that. And then the other thing is, and cut me off if I'm crossing the line.
Okay.
But I wanted to mention that we recently formed a little local grassroots group. And we are reaching out to the committee. Um, and I hope it's okay to just mention that, um, to open up the possibility to explore some alternatives.
And, and as we said, we, we.
And they've been, they've been very positive and welcoming and we're in dialogue and I'm looking forward to our next meeting. Um, my last communication was so close to this.
Yeah.
I didn't wanna, they, they had ten pounds of shit in a five pound bag. You guys are busy. We're all busy. I didn't wanna throw one more thing into your schedule, so I respectfully said, let's wait until after. So I wanna just renew my interest in.
Much appreciated.
We wanna meet with you. And then the other thing is somewhere around the twenty-second of September, and we're, and we're hereby inviting you folks. That's, I'm sorry, the twenty-first. It's a Sunday afternoon. We're planning, we're looking for a venue right now, but our group is putting together a public, um, meeting. Um, and we're inviting people for as robust a Q and A as they want, where they can hear us opine as to some of our reasons. And we'd love for you folks to be there and to participate, but we have been working on, it's getting late, thirty seconds. We've been working on a model with some, um, world, um, expert academics and some highly experienced, um, industry professionals in wastewater and water and other utilities. And we've come up with a model that we wanna present and hear what you have to say.
Yeah. As, as, as I, in our email exchange, we, we very much like to see that. Um, so please encourage the, give it a share with us. Um, and, um, thank you again for your interest in this. And again, I just stress enough, uh, or again, that there, there's not anything that anyone has showed or suggested or someone or anyone that's, uh, offered to speak with us or ask for a document that we haven't provided or spoken with, and that's gonna continue. And I, I very much look forward to that conversation.
So do we. Thank you.
And hope that it happens.
Thanks so much. Really appreciate it.
I have a fairly straightforward question. My name is June Schwang. And since, um, you know, you presented basically the assessment of the water asset in Hopewell. I agree. I wish we had done it sooner and I wish we had started sooner on using the two point three million dollar grant to put the filtration system on six. Um, but in any case, I think I heard you say with the budget, like obviously one of the pros for the council being so in favor of selling the system is to get the money, right? So you were mentioning that there are, have already been budgetary commitments that the council has made and other budgeting or expenditure decisions. Where is that all listed? Like in terms of what the council has prioritized? Um, for spending.
I'm sorry, Junior, you said budgetary decision. What budgetary decisions are you talking about? By the?
Did you mention about how the money gets used?
So, uh, so I just said it would be available to be used for borough priorities. There's no, uh, there's no.
That'll be a, that's a, that's a decision for the community. That's not our money, you know, with, if the, if the community accepts this scenario, uh, whether you think New Jersey American is gonna charge us less or not, but I do, but, um, uh, the six point four million dollars for a town that taxes everyone every year, two and a half million dollars um, is significant and it will be a choice for this community, um, through us, but we will be taking input from everyone and, and you know, convening, uh, studies and, and whatever our community essentially decides to spend that money. I'm, I'm not here saying that it's all gonna be tax relief. I mean, maybe that's what the community decides, but I, I, I personally don't think that's sustainable, but it will.
For tax relief, it sounded like in the presentation, like there's a list of projects that you.
There, I. I think maybe just giving examples of, of capital, you know, projects, there's municipal services, you know, I just think I was.
I gave examples.
List of capital projects that the, that the council is interested in.
No, I think I was just speaking generally about what it could be used for, not nothing.
Right. And I outlined some general concepts of things, basically other needs that we have. There's no commitment or plan that's been made for any of those needs. I was trying to underscore that there is more at stake here than just the water system. That's all.
Right, right. Yeah, I just think that it's important for us to also understand what you see as the benefit of selling in terms of, you know, having the money in hand. And that was definitely the impression that I got for what you would do with the money.
Well, 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 let's say this, the, the, we're, the plan enacted by coun, by council is to use the money to pay off our debt.
Mm-hmm.
So for, again, a town, what, with apologies, we take from you every year in taxes, about two and a half million dollars. We have roughly seven-ish million dollars in debt. Is that?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
So with this money and the, what are called debt reserves, the money that we just hold kind of in place to, to pay for part of that, between those two things, it's enough to pay off our mortgage. That is what councils decided, um, to tell and ask the state for permission to do with the funds. It's not to go on a shopping spree. It's not to, I don't know, what else? It's to pay off our debt.
Actually, it's a requirement, isn't it?
Well, yeah. And, and this financially is the result of what we, I don't use the word take, you know, it is our job to raise taxes, but what we take from this community every year in taxes, uh, a little more than a third of that money that we take for everything we do, uh, I mean, well, I won't quote a movie here, but, um, police, we'll pay for police, for roads, for, uh, parks, for our employees and staff here, uh, for all of that. We would get about a million out of the two and a half million dollars back to do other things. Um, and that's what councils decided. That is what now, as of a month ago, in an earlier slide, the state has approved us to use the money for. Um, so if this money were to arrive with a yes vote, um, we would have that million dollars every year for this community to decide what its priorities are, would, would be to do with. Um, we have ideas on it, but it's not set.
So there's a process that where the community has a say.
Oh, hundred percent.
In like what's an essential cost versus non-essential. Like I would consider water essential. I would consider some other things non-essential.
Understood. And, and, and one, I guess that will be the choice in November. And I guess we're saying that we've tried to show what the dollar cost is for, for that. You know, in this case, it's, uh, fourteen million dollars over ten years.
So one option is that.
Well, if we could, um, if it, pardon me, if, if we could, uh, there are people online watching, um, speak one at a time. I know you guys are, you're welcome to use your time interchangeably, but if you are gonna ask a question, please come to the front so we can capture it and have people at home see it as well. So I'll, I'll let you guys decide how do you yield your time, but.
Yeah, thank you very much. I really wanted to understand what you were referring to when you said to use the money from the sale for the list of projects. I just wanted to see what those.
Yeah, it's for the community to decide. I, I, I don't think there's anyone in this room doesn't think there's things that we need to do and that we prefer to do them without taxing more. And that's the amount of stuff we'd get to do every year without borrowing more. Uh, whether it's returning it to us, uh, as tax relief or other things that we need to spend money on that we are not currently doing. Um, that's, that's what that white bar is meant to show. And those things are not decided yet.
Thank you.
All right, um, I have one hand raised online. Uh, there's no one, we're not done here in person, but, um, but good time to, uh, get to a few online people. Um, if, just as a reminder, if you're online and like to speak, please, uh, push the raised hand button. Uh, there's someone named Steve that I'm going to promote and bring over to, uh, ask a virtual question. I mean, they're joining virtually. It'll be a real question. Uh, so Steve, your hand's been up for a long time. If you're still there, um, please turn your, your camera and mic on. Happy to have you, um, join us and ask your, your question. Uh, if not, I understand your hand's been raised for a while. Here, here. All right. One second. Let me put you up on the screen.
Yep.
Alright, Steve, uh, welcome. We can see and hear you in Borough Hall. Please just give your name and, uh, feel free to address the, uh, the group here and, and ask your questions.
Sure, uh, Steve Stacy, uh, live on First Street. Uh, I, I want to thank, uh, all the members of our. The, the mayor and the Borough Council for being here and, and going through this. I'm sure. This was a, a lot of analysis and time spent on this. Um. I, I guess the, the first question I have is. This referendum, you're essentially asking us to approve a contract that we've not seen, right? Uh. I, I think the slides and all this discussion. Have been, um. Uh. Very, uh, informative, but none of that is legally binding, right? And so I guess my question is. Are we go, my first question is, I've got two. Uh, the first question is. Are we going to be able to see a contract or some sort of memorandum of agreement? Prior to the vote on November fourth.
Alright, um, uh, not taking too much of your time, let you ask lots more questions if you'd like. Um, answer is yes. Uh, the actual contract, which has both been approved now by council. And the Board of Public Utilities, so I have that right, the. It is, is on our website. It's been there for, for months. You're welcome to take a look at it, Hopewell Borough slash, uh, Water. Uh, there's a copy there. There's also a fact sheet that kind of summarizes the basic terms, but, um. Uh, and I say this as an attorney who is paid to look at documents and read it, you know, if you're, uh. You're welcome to look at the full thing, uh, you know, if that's, if that's your, what you, what you'd like, it is there, uh, for, for review and, and, and inspection. Uh, if you've got specific questions on it, we, you know, we're happy to take them and try to get them to the right person. Uh, it's not a simple document, but it is there for, for your review, um, uh, on the website.
Okay, thank you very much. Um. And I think my second question is, I, I think it goes back to the second question of the Q and A period. Uh. You know, when, when you were talking about the projected or modeled rate increases in the future. There was a linear five percent rate increase. Um, but my understanding is that the BPU allows base rate increases for capital improvements. And, and I apologize if this was answered earlier tonight. I've been kind of in and out with family issues, but, um. I, that five percent linear increase doesn't seem to account for the potential for. Uh, one time or single, uh, base rate increases due to capital improvements. So. Can somebody speak to what those might be? Uh, and again, I apologize if this was covered earlier and I missed it.
Um, well, I'll, I'll to point to both to our folks and in New Jersey American a little bit, um, uh, here. I think we addressed a little bit, but I think it's, it's a great, important question to, to say a hundred times, frankly, to, to people can, it's, it's not simple. Uh, and, and, uh, you know, attempted for as many of us to understand it as possible. Um, one part of it is, is modeling that we did, uh, I think going back fifteen years, we got four percent going back ten years, five percent. Uh, but I'll, you know, Jersey American, if you could talk a bit about how you build your rate cases, how the capital things. Go into it, um, and, and how that's reflected in the. Current rates that we're going to get.
But before that, just can I just, the, the modeling, the retrospective analysis that we did captures all of the rate changes. All of the surcharges, all of the components. Base rates. Surcharges. Distribution and system improvement charges, et cetera, during that ten-year period. So it's an aggregation of all of the rate changes over time. So each year you're looking at what the rates are in total. Uh, and, and that's, that's where we ended up with the five percent. In other words, there's cases, what, half a dozen different components to it, but. So at least during that. Ten-year retrospective look, we're capturing all of the things that you just described. Now, we can't predict what they're going to be in the future, but that's just so you know.
I'm, I'm sorry, but those are, those are a retrospective rate increases that don't. Account for the capital improvements that are being proposed for our borough, right? So.
I'm sorry, you're talking about our projections or our projection of the New Jersey American rate?
Jersey American water rate increases.
Right. So that projection is based on. A retrospective analysis of all the applicable rates and changes during a ten-year period. In other words, there's all these different, each time something changed. We would. Account for it. So you're looking at that ten-year period, but in the end, you're looking at what was the total, the aggregate rate at that time. Or the cost for, for an average user, uh, at. It, it, at that period, and then ten years later, and then an annualized rate. It's actually not a linear, it's a slightly, you know, exponential curve because it's compounding, but, um, so that, that captures. Whatever happened in that last ten years. So in, in other words, when you talk about. Rates that change, uh, for example, the surcharges that are related to, uh, capital investments and so on. All of that is baked into those rates that we analyzed.
And, and maybe to point out to Jersey American on this one, I think you can talk a little bit about the kind of capital, obviously you haven't done any capital work in Hopewell Borough because you have not had any, uh, control of our. Systems in that group, but you've done, you can talk a little bit about the other capital work that you've done that resulted in. Where we've gotten to, where you've gotten to now in your rates, because it, it seems to me that it includes. Lots of capital work that's included in that.
Yes, so over the last, we'll say. Since twenty ten, the company has made almost four point two billion dollars worth of investments. And so all of that capital over that time is ba, is part of that. Annual average five percent increase, but today's point. It may fluctuate higher one year, one rate case versus another rate case, but over the ten, that period, that trend. It's been an annual average of a five percent increase, and that's the best. Use, uh, or estimate for protect, projection that we can make. Um, to forecast any type of future rates, because again, we don't set the rates, the board does. Uh, but that. Since, like I said, since two thousand and ten to today, we have made over four point two billion dollars of investments. In our last, in our twenty twenty-four rate case alone, we saw recovery of one point three billion dollars. So that one point three billion dollars of investments from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four was part of our last rate increase, and we asked for recovery of that. And the bill impact to an average use customer was that five dollars and thirty-two cents. Um, that I stated, or sixty-four dollars annually. And so that's from what the customer was paying. Our rates went effective in September. In August. The rates they were paying to what they paid in September was that five dollar increase for all of that one point three billion worth of investments. Plus all of the operating expenses that we have, plus all of the financing costs to repay, you know, for those investments. Does that help, Steve?
It, it does. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Um, any follow-up before I, uh, it takes a second for me to move you back to the rest of the regular room. I, I don't want to do that if you got a follow-up question. Is that?
No, I.
Alright, thank you so much. Um, uh, reminder for those online to push your raised hand button. I'm, I'm not seeing any, um. Online or, or really anyone else in person, you know, this is, uh, not our last opportunity to ask, um, uh. New Jersey American or our, uh, professionals questions, uh, we're going to look at, uh, you know, some, some, uh, future, uh, in-person. Events for similar opportunities as you're thinking about things, as you're looking at this over the coming weeks, um, uh. Feel free to reach out and in any way that you want. I, I, I met this before, um, uh, if anyone would like to meet with us, that's what we do. Um, if you've got questions for a particular, um, expertise, uh, please, you know, send them us and we'll, we'll, we'll find the right person who might. Help get the information that, that you're looking for. Oh, do it. Yep, please.
Hi, Betsy Keller, Hart Avenue. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. Uh, if the sale goes through, will the water be fluoridated? Uh, which I believe it is not presently, and do I understand correctly that the PFOS or the forever chemicals. Level would be reduced to zero if the sale is effectuated?
Um, on the subject of fluoridation, we're not, the water you get. Does come from the fluoridated side of our plant. We actually do fluoridate. To the south. Now, it's been offline for two years for other reasons. And we're still probably a year away from putting it back online, but that's kind of a side issue. Um, in terms of PFOS, nothing, um. You, you asked, would it get to zero? Not zero, um, I don't think you can measure zero.
Please, yeah.
Um, the treatment process for PFOS is usually, uh, a carbon, a carbon. And, uh, you know, we, we measure for breakthrough to make sure we're meeting the standard. And then we switch out the carbon. So it, it wouldn't, it might be zero for a while, but it, it raises up as long as it stays below the standard and then that's when we do a change out.
Probably below the laboratory detection limit, that is what it really is. There's no real zero in the world and.
But the idea is that if the sale goes through, the PFOS will be reduced significantly.
That's right.
In our water.
That's right. And, and not only would it be reduced significantly, I mean, either, in either scenario, either we have to treat it. Not only to meet the current state standards, but we would have to by twenty twenty-nine be able to meet the federal standards, which are much lower. Uh, and in either case, everybody's required to do that. I mean, the regulations just force you to do it. You have to, and you should.
And, and maybe just put it another way, um, while there would be a slight delay in, in the. Scenario where we don't sell towards implementing the additional PFOS. Measures in, in either scenario, PFOS will be. Treated, either with the grant that we will receive to put Wells, well, six back online and four, uh, and treat it there. Or how New Jersey American will do it. So in, in either scenario, I'm going to say, let's not worry about PFOS. It's a very important. But I, I don't know that there's, uh, a, there's, it, it will physically be done differently. Um, in, in each situation, one locally here with a grant or by New Jersey American. Um, the only real difference is that, um, we project, uh, in about another, at least two years before that. System would be online here, whereas there, I think their plan is to immediately switch us over to their water, uh, and lower it immediately. But we are. We've tested below the applicable standard in town.
Three straight.
For three straight years, yeah.
Thank you. Might allow for more?
Please.
Thank you, because you just reminded me, um, with the both scenarios, can you talk about hexavalan chromium? I don't know if that's something that is required to be treated. I know that we've tested in Hopewell Borough, we've tested for, but I think it was voluntary testing of hexavalan chromium, chromium six. So I don't know. If that's something on the radar.
Um, I can tell you that from the borough side, hexchrome has never been an issue here. We don't have. Any plating, so I, I worked as an environmental consultant for thirty years investigating in cleaning up contaminated sites.
But we did, I, I do have, um, our reports. There were some years where we did have hexavalan chromium.
I'm sorry, there were some years when we.
When it was found in our water.
I.
According to the, the bulletins that I was.
Oh, you're talking about the consumer confidence reports?
That, that's probably the only thing that would come, yeah, that's my guess.
Well. Last I knew, the D E P actually hadn't established a standard for hexavalan chromium.
Right, but there were, uh, you know, those bulletins that we get about how your water's doing.
We, I. That would be news to me, and I've gone through all of our analytical data, but I'll, I'll let New Jersey Americans speak to that on your side.
I'll try. I think it's part of something called U C M R, an unregulated contaminant. Monitoring report.
Right.
We're required to check for certain compounds that may not be regulated yet. So we would, we obviously follow that regulation and I can't tell you what, whether, whether we picked it up or not, but we can get back to you on that.
Okay. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to give the folks online another, another chance to push the raised hand button, and I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing that, um, uh. Just as, as, uh, just giving people a last opportunity here, uh, as I was saying, um. This is not the only chance to, to ask questions or to send us stuff that we can direct to even New Jersey American. Uh, uh, or our, uh, borough professionals, uh, to answer, please, uh, keep sending those in. Um, uh, I want to thank everyone, uh, who is watching this, uh, on, you know, on tape or online or here in person. Um, there are so many things that I love about this community. Um, I had a lot of thoughts and feelings about what tonight would be like. Um, uh, I'm a preparer and a worrier, um, and I, uh, ultimately. Uh, you know, tell my significant other, like I live in the best place and, uh, you know, plan for things and, and worry about it, um, and, uh, be. Not surprised, but, um, reminded how wonderful a community that you have. And I just want to thank everyone here tonight. Uh, not just for coming, but for your diligence in thinking about this and asking questions, and I, I, I really do ask that you continue to do that. Every question we get helps us all understand this more, um, and, and come with a, a better. Answer or a better understanding of what we're going to be doing on November fourth. Um, so, uh, with that, I want to thank again, uh, everyone on the, the borough team. Uh, New Jersey American for, for coming here, uh, but really everyone in this community for, uh, tuning in, asking these questions and please. Uh, continue doing that. Uh, thanks. Thank you all so much.